This study session, the City Council took order. We got three things on the agenda tonight. First up, we have a joint study session with the Environmental Stewardship Board. And then we'll have the Urban Land Institute come talk about some of the Northern Gateway, City Village Property, things going on, and then a housing update after that. So want to welcome the Environmental Stewardship Board here. It's good to see you. It's been a few months since we last saw you. Thanks for wanting to come back and chat with us some more. So we'll just go around the room real quick and just do introductions so we all know each other's names. I'm Kyle Merrill Linton.
Ashley Augustine, Deputy City Attorney.
Steve Barr, Mayor Perdón.
Hannah Kite, Council at Large.
Robert Reichardt, Council District.
Jeff Frazier, ESB Member.
Hannah Kite, ESB Co-Chair.
Ren Soderland, Director of Public Works and Utilities.
Laura Rosenbaum, Sustainability Coordinator.
Fredo Pernau, ESB Member.
Kelsey Dombrowski, ESB Member.
Scott Mullen, ESB Chair.
Joel Zink, City Council Member at Large.
Andrea Peters, City Council.
Jim Becklinburg, City Manager.
All right, well, with that, we'll just dive into it.
Just a brief orientation for where we are within a longer process here. The council saw the recommendations from our Root and Renew process for open space in parks. That was kind of part one, and this is part two tonight of the, I'd say, foundational work in our, you know, workup and our, you know, next conversation with South Suburban Parks and Recreation about our operating agreements and expectations. So with recommendations tonight and any direction, council, you know, staff is prepared to kind of start to merge those, those two recommendation documents and bring back some kind of conversation for council about priorities and how to order that as we do. Get ready for a conversation with South Suburban. That's my introduction.
Great. So are you kicking it off or is staff anything to?
I'm happy to kick it off. Yeah, so thank you, council, for hosting us tonight. We appreciate that. We always look forward to the opportunity to meet with you. As, as City Manager Becklinburg said, we were tasked by council with coming up with, with some recommendations related to environmental stewardship and sustainability as part of the city's upcoming negotiations with South Suburban, which we've done. And this is our work product up on the screens. And we are certainly happy to go through those in as much or as little detail as council would like. I certainly want to have a conversation among the council and the ESB about not only our recommendations, but when we're through with that, also talking about what our next steps might be. Because obviously, we're an advisory board to council, and we always value input from you all and what we have to do next. And so, thank you again for, for having us. And if people don't want to jump right in, I'm happy to start going through the recommendations and we can take questions or conversation or whatever, as council sees fit.
Have you, these are great. A lot of work that, have you had any conversations with South Suburban about this whole concept and boards and incorporating this in the, into the operating agreement? Or is this, we're, we're looking at something they haven't kind of seen yet or understood?
Some of both, yeah. We hosted Andy Jennings, who is the Operations Manager at South Suburban. And then now former Executive Director Rob Hanna at one of our meetings, probably three months ago now, and had an exchange of ideas at that point. So they're familiar with some of this, some of, some of this they're not familiar with.
I think the idea is this is show council, so make sure that we're good with some of the recommendations. Well, for people in the audience or people watching, why don't we just kind of go through them just briefly with at least the high level recommendations?
Yeah, so why it's important is that we have a dated operating agreement with South Suburban that pretty badly needs updating. And a part of that will be from the ESB's perspective, trying to get incorporated certain gains that relate to environmental stewardship and sustainability. For people who don't know, the city owns quite a bit of park and open space land, but we've contracted for a generation now essentially for South Suburban to manage that land. And the perspective of the ESB has been that we can be asking South Suburban to do more with their management that would benefit sustainability and stewardship. It's a lot of space, right? And it's, that includes a lot of natural open space, an obvious example being South Platte Park. So asking South Suburban to incorporate stewardship and sustainability operations and thinking is important. As far as our top line recommendations, number one, establish a sustainability management body within SSPRD, South Suburban Parks and Recreation District, which would basically be analogous to what the Environmental Stewardship Board is to the City Council. Number two, create an environmental stewardship action plan for SSPRD, again analogous to what the Environmental Stewardship Board did for the city of Littleton with our environmental action plan. Number three, engage the community in environmental decision making. That speaks for itself, right? It's always mission critical to engage the public when we're making decisions about anything, including environmental sustain, sustainability. And stewardship, one thing obviously that catalyzed that recommendation recently was the furor, I would, I would say, over the paving of some soft trail along the Lee Gulch. But it, it's more broadly an important principle. Number four.
Tell me about why you think the paving of the soft trail, I mean, I think there's environmental reasons to do that and environmental reasons not to do that. I mean, help me understand why you think that falls in the purview of the, of environmental?
It was more of a community engagement.
Yeah, it was more of a community engagement thing than an environmental stewardship or sustainability thing. I think the ESB didn't really have a position on environmental gains or not. It was just people, it took people by surprise.
He's about the Lee Gulch trail, not the?
No, I know, but, but I, I just, I just, we're trying to understand the example that he's using there because I think there are reasons to think that that has environment, paving over has environmental benefits in terms of, you know, wastewater coming off with the, with the sand and also the increased maintenance intended. So I just wanted to understand that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, on the community engagement side of things, you know, while I was like on the fence about this and, you know, truly myself speaking on the fence about it as part of an operating agreement, it's, you know, the community engagement is a bit like the sustainability picture. And I think what Scott was saying here was just that being one example of like, if we're gonna talk about sustainability kind of holistically and how we can help essentially SSPRD or like what we want to see from them in terms of sustainability does incorporate that.
Degree of community engagement. No, I absolutely agree on the community engagement. I'm sorry if I got my, the recommendations confused, so I apologize for that.
No, 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 no. Number four, integrate sustainability updates in SSPRD reports, simply a reporting out of, of anything that pertains to these topics. And then number five, revisit, revisit the operating agreement more periodically. This is meant to be analogous to, to what the city did with our comprehensive plan. It was ancient and it was updated and now we've resolved as a city to continually update it periodically. So those are the main recommendations, obviously. Our relationship as a city with South Suburban is important, I think, to both parties. And so we, we want a friendly and good faith partnership with them that helps both organizations make progress. And then the last sort of recommendation that we had was less related to environmental sustainability and stewardship, but not entirely unrelated to those things. And it had to do with how South Suburban has conducted elections and inviting more transparency and opportunity in those elections, including the potential of everyone receiving automatically their mail-in ballot. I think it's the only election citizens of Littleton are not able to automatically vote, vote by mail in, I think other special districts included, including South Metro Fire, send us ballots, South Suburban being an exception. So essentially, you can, you can be one of five board members by getting a couple of thousand, I think it was, what, three or four thousand in the last election.
Sixteen hundred.
Yeah, and be in charge.
Nineteen thousand.
Yeah, be twenty percent in charge of a gigantic budget. So those are our recommendations and we're happy to have conversation and questions about that.
Do you know if there's any other jurisdictions that are requesting this? I know Lone Tree just updated their operating agreement, but I don't know if any other of the jurisdictions that South Suburban works with have done anything like this. Do you know?
Ask staff to coordinate.
You don't know or they haven't?
I will say, I have shared these with my colleagues in the other cities. And they have not taken this kind of focus on sustainability.
But what about their, I think, broader, broader picture with their operating agreements?
Right, they have not had a focus on these issues. These have, have not risen to priorities.
Right, I heard, but just generally speaking with their operating rate, how, how often do they update it?
Right.
It'd be great to coordinate with the other municipalities rather than each five of us go at one at a time. So I think we need to touch base with those municipalities, city side.
I'll bring that back for us.
I mean, to the extent goals align, we had envisioned almost a tri-cities process, which has been an advantage to the city in homelessness context and other contexts. Obviously, Inglewood has its own Parks and Rec District, so they wouldn't be one of the three. But if Sheridan has similar goals or some of the other communities in the district, it'd be only to the good to, you know, get some leverage by coordinating with them, so.
Sheridan doesn't really have the capacity to do this type of coordination, but I think they can do it.
That's my point, if, if all the communities together say, hey, South Suburban, we all kind of want this going on rather than just one city at a time, then it's a lot easier to.
But since Lone Tree was one of the most recent updates to operating agreement, it seems to me, couldn't we use that as a template and customize it so we don't start from scratch? I mean, because ours is what, from the eighties or something?
I think that's informing us kind of South Suburban's current operating, you know, principles and how they're approaching this. As I've looked at, at that agreement, I, I think there are things that Littleton has talked about that we will want to kind of go a little farther with that conversation with, with them. But yes, I think it's, it's certainly more updated than ours.
Right, and starting from scratch, it just seems like we've been talking about this for how long? And it just seems we're finally getting closer and I don't think that all that information that, we shouldn't have to start from scratch. We should just customize. I mean, there's gotta be boilerplate.
Yep, yeah, I think it'd be helpful to start and look at it for sure, and we can tailor it to what we need based on.
You don't want to create a new document from scratch?
No, not really. Work, work smarter, not harder.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's the most recent one, that's why I keep citing it. I mean, there, there's not very old, they have different issues.
I will point out too, that even regardless of what is in the other operating agreements, I mean, we are a beneficiary of, you know, a taxing body for our residents and we have the ability to negotiate on certain points of leverage, like, you know, environmental sustainability. And, you know, I think the asks in here are, are very reasonable steps to, I mean, yes, you know, Lone Tree, Sheridan, you know, who knows who else would also advocate for these things? And now we have a body of work to shop around to these other jurisdictions to see if even we can get them to co-sign onto it, to say that this should be incorporated into that larger reporting. And even if not, you know, it's, in my thought process, it's worth embodying environmental sustainability into kind of permanent governance positions that have reportability and accountability. Otherwise, you know, quite frankly, we'll mostly just end up having kind of reporting of things that happened without any concerted planning or oversight of, of those things, which is kind of what we've seen.
I might add that these recommendations don't, they don't, they don't fall from the clear blue sky. South Suburban, I can't remember when, fairly recently, went through its own comprehensive planning process, reached out to stakeholders, asked what are our values. There are just four in the comprehensive plan, core values. One of, one of them is sustainability. So it's been identified to South Suburban by its community, by its stakeholders, is, is important, so.
Yeah, I guess I'll just add, so, I mean, the agreement hasn't been updated since 1983. And so, I mean, I, I feel the urgency to get the operating agreement updated, but I also feel like that we should customize it to, to what council and the ESB wants in the agreement too, right?
Yeah, I just, the starting from scratch thing just seems overwhelming when there's one out there that we can customize.
Yeah, it's a good starting place to look at, for sure. But yes, we would customize it to what we need here.
Question for the other board members, are there any, think about the discussion regarding this, is there anything else that didn't make it into these recommendations that you kind of talked about? Why didn't something make it into it? Or just trying to figure out some of the other things that you guys might have?
I think there were a lot of things that were brought up that were very specific, very detail oriented, that we just decided to weave off because it fits into all of those different levels, so.
I'm not sure if it made, if it made it into the council package for tonight, probably it did, but more of our, our sustainability staff members put together sort of a distillation of all of the items from the ESB's action plan that touch on South Suburban. They're a little hyper-specific for a document like this, but we would love for all this to, to happen, so.
Yeah, it just, all these recommendations are kind of high level kind of policy, which is, which is great, I was just wondering.
I mean, like, one of them that we, you know, is probably, the timing of it's not great, but when they look for, you know, they were hiring, the hiring process, to look for somebody who makes sustainability priority. But again, that'd be great.
Not ever a, already agreed on.
Yeah, no, but I appreciate you all putting together that memo at the, kind of a last minute, you know, in terms of that recommendation. I think, you know, that leadership does need to kind of come from the top. And while it's important to build in those governance structures, having an executive director that reflects these values would be, I think, a huge benefit to our residents.
I think we tried to focus more on kind of broad policy structural issues than, you know, do what we're doing for Littleton and try and be the Environmental Stewardship Board for South Suburban. I think they kind of need to do that on their own because, I mean, let's face it, historically, even though sustainability is one of their core identified values, they, it has not been a major priority for them. And they have an awful lot of land and facilities to manage and that's a lot to do, but I think there are some of these things that are relatively simple structural steps they could take to actually make it more of a constant recurring value that's actually actionable, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. One of the, one of the things that came across when we met with Andy Jennings and Rob Hanna was that South Suburban, when it comes to stewardship and sustainability, is sort of where the city was maybe five or six years ago. Certain things are happening, but it's ad hoc and often only ancillary to other institutional goals. So a lot of what we were thinking about as a board when we were coming up with these recommendations was making that sustainability effort systematic, baking it into the thinking and strategy of South Suburban.
Well, thinking of the first one with the sustainability body within South Suburban, I think if even municipalities, when municipalities discuss kind of operating agreements, I think other cities that have sustainability boards would be a good feeder into that, you know, to make sure that we have representation from each of the communities on such a sustainability board. Like, if, if everyone has a, an ESB-like body to have one member of views, you know, represent on that would be interesting.
Yeah, there was a start to this. For, for a minute, South Suburban had a, had a couple of staff members meeting to try to systematize the sustainability conversation and for whatever reason, it fell by the wayside. There are people over there who are ready and willing and able to be a part of such a body and provide expertise, you know, from within the organization, like we have our very knowledgeable staff helping us along the way. They have a lot of knowledgeable staff as well.
The only change I would see is more to Robert's point with the, the community engagement is, I think, you know, just even striking the environmental decision making. I realize this is because you have the environmental stewardship lens on us while you're presented here, but I think as far as the operating agreement, you know, we don't want to limit it to just environmental decision making, so.
I do appreciate calling out the standard, I wish that community engagement is done at APA or something similar, it's, you know, very, very commonplace now. And spelling out those terms in our operating agreement, I think, would be a huge benefit.
So you're suggesting to take out the word environmental in that right there? Just talk about general community engagement? Is that what you're suggesting?
Actually, just as part of the operating agreement, yeah, we need to make sure that they have a process for community engagement when they're, you know, I mean, it doesn't have to be.
But not change this.
No, not necessarily change this, but for the, is the, the operating agreement between the city, it's not between the ESB and South Suburban, it's between the city a little bit.
And this won't be copied and pasted, but we'll pull elements of it into that operating agreement when it goes to get signed, so.
Yeah, and to that point, I would think that we would want to, in the actual operating agreement, have specific metrics for some of these things. Just looking at item four and section two, manage and reduce water use, that's a fantastic goal, but we want to have sort of achievable metrics there. Want to be able to measure if that's, if we have success. So I'm assuming the operating agreement will be way more fully fleshed out. Again, not, not to, I'm not speaking ill of this at all.
No, that's just one of the things, it's like, yeah, we could get really detailed about, that's not the, we didn't, that's your job.
Right, right, that's their job.
And just to that point, in, in staff's view also, we are, you know, looking to ensure that, you know, these, these recommendations can be transferred into our own kind of operating framework and policies. Because, you know, really, while South Suburban manages so much of our parks and open space, we also have some open space and, you know, space like, like parks that we manage and we should be holding ourselves to standards that we're holding them to also. So we'll be looking to do that as we move forward.
How many metrics? On the very far column, there's a current update on what the city of Littleton is doing, if there needs to be any type of evidence for how we're working alongside them, not just sort of telling what we think should be done, but we're also walking the law.
That is one answer to Mayor Schlauch's earlier question about what we left off was metrics. We talked about the wisdom or not of trying to include specifics, and I think there's just too much sort of operational specificity within South Suburban for us to pick a number versus, say, water reduction or whatever. They're just gonna have to help us with that.
To that, to that end though, I think part of setting those metrics is establishing a baseline for their current practices, which I suspect would be kind of, you know, a stretch in and of itself at their current state. And I think when it comes to setting some of those specific metrics, whether that be water, you know, use reduction, you know, differing from pesticide application, things of that nature, having somewhere in our operating agreement that within X amount of time, that a baseline for some of those key points, whether that be forestry practice in terms of completing at least a survey of existing conditions be conducted within X number of years upon signature. And then from there, you know, council can start, you know, saying, hey, let's aim for thirty or fifty percent reduction in pesticide application in five years or whatever.
Yeah, parts of that would be pretty interesting conversations for the negotiators. You know, for, for example, one thing Andy and Rob shared with us when they came was that, you know, they're obviously managing a pretty significant urban forest with a tiny forestry crew. And so there are staff, staffing issues, right? It's, it's hard for them to fill those positions and retain people in those positions. It may or may not be an organizational priority for them to do so. And so some of, some of those specifics will have to be talked about going forward. Yeah, how do we, how do we better manage the, the urban forest that South Suburban's responsible for if they have like six people on a, on a forest?
I mean, I think, I think as a council, we need to engage a little bit stronger in the trade-offs conversation. You know, I think, I think South Suburban is not a, it's not a fat organization when it comes to things. And, you know, the, I was looking at these recommendations and one of the recommendations was around, you know, stormwater permitting. And, you know, the, you know, my, and it calls out ACC and LPS, but in my time at LPS, we spent a ton of money on stormwater retrofitting when we, when we rebuilt our schools. And is that what we want the South Suburban to be spending their capital money on?
Yeah.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, no, I'm not, I'm not sure it is. I'm, I'm, and so I, 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 it's okay that we disagree, but I do, I do think it's important that we have, you know, we're making these demands on South Suburban. I think in the big picture, they're doing a good job managing, I mean, our parks are nice right now. I, I don't want them to be degraded. And, and I, and there are always trade-offs. I, I don't want them to be degraded and, and I, and there are always trade-offs. And so I want us to be a little bit serious about the trade-offs that we're engaging in. And obviously, you know, the trade-off, there's also a trade-off around the recommendation for Kettering Lake that I am not okay with because there is not enough surface water to keep that lake full. And so I think we need to, you know, have some serious conversations around how we maintain our community assets, not degrade them while at the same time increasing, you know, our environmental stewardship, so.
I do want to agree with you and not butt at you constantly. But no, but like, I think we heard from SSBRD, you know, the, the degree to which service is being provided to each of the municipalities, you're right, like the, the actual onsite staffing personnel is extremely thin. And really the conversation is not just about resource allocation, but what is, what are the resources necessary to achieve a service level and quality that we want as a city and, and to seek ways to, to fund that.
And I, yeah, I'll be, and I think the, that same conversation applies to the crusher fines conversation around how cement is less, costs less to maintain and capital money is different than operating money. And being thoughtful about how, what we ask people to do with different pots of money. So, you know, I, I want to have this conversation with South Suburban, but I want it to be sophisticated in terms of the trade-offs we're asking them to do.
Yeah, I think it'll be a conversation for council around what your values are collectively because nice can mean anything, right? Does it mean aesthetically nice? Does it mean nice in terms of stewardship, right? Part of, part of what you can talk about, for example, is how, because South Suburban is not taking a sustainability mindset across its operations, the cottonwood forest in South Platte Park is in steep decline. What does it mean for the niceness of that park? If those trees are lost, I don't know, something, something we ought to talk about.
Don't we have a joint meeting with them amongst their new boards, their council?
After the election.
A council, yeah, after the election, I mean, haven't we traditionally done that and we do it again?
Yes. Could be the plan even for this, could be this, this fall, still to, to work out the timing.
I was gonna say, I think some of the metrics and more deliverables, actual items, are also going to be important to have a conversation with other cities because we don't want to have, South Suburban doesn't want to have to have different, you know, runoff standards in different cities and all that different stuff. So I think if all the communities are, as part of that discussion.
I'll just add for the stormwater piece that South Suburban is covered by the cities. What is this, what is, will separate stormwater permit? So they're under our MS4 permit and so they have to meet our requirements. So I guess, you know, we mostly own all the parks, right? So they fall under our, our purview for stormwater.
Is that just for the ownership is the, the portion of the land that they own, which is what half of Jackass Hill Park and there's one other parcel they have, right?
So for, for loan trees, that was just.
No, for us, for, so is the permit just based on the land ownership? So for, if they own any land, do they have to, are they still?
Yeah, it's, so it, it's based off that they're, they're within the city limits, right?
City limits, not the ownership of the land.
We do want to make sure we reserve just a few minutes to talk about what council would like to see us working on next and hear input from us on that. But we've got about, I think, 15 minutes left. I mean, if there's more on this, we're happy to keep talking about it. Thank you all again for engagement and for hosting. We really do appreciate it.
Could you say that again louder? We just can't hear you.
He said, we just wanted to open the conversation up to what council wants ESP to focus on moving forward there. So I was open up to council if anyone has any thoughts.
The, I mean, we, some of us recently participated in the conversation, the study that just got almost near complete around our waste management. And I don't know where you guys are in engaging in that conversation, but I felt like the, the study has clearly identified more opportunities for reducing our waste stream. And so I personally am interested in that work and I think any support to move that forward would be helpful.
Yeah, we appreciate bringing that up. That's where we were.
And we haven't, that's just my idea, I'm not speaking for the council.
We've heard about it.
We got a presentation on it at one of our recent meetings and there was consensus among the board that we'd like to work on that if, if that's what council wants us working on, the timing fits. It fits with our stewardship mission, so we're all, we're all about it, if council's all about it.
Chris, Brent, for just, I think we have dates on the tentative council calendar to, to bring that.
Yeah, I believe so. I, the waste diversion study, we're going to be bringing that to study session on July 22nd. And then we'll be bringing the final report to council on August 19th. Does that sound right? I think for, for council, I don't know if it's approval or approval of the recommendations in the report, so.
Just approval of the recommendations. I don't think it's, there's no implementation or act, that would be further meetings. But as a first one, because they're going to, the, the entity that we're working with, which is through the Colorado Department of Public Health and the Environment, CBHE, is, as part of that plan, they come up with seven specific recommendations for each city participating. And so it's the city of Littleton, Centennial, Sheridan and Englewood. And then we come up with three regional strategies that we agree on. And so then that will be going to each city's council to then vote on if they agree that those are good recommendations. There's no action for that. But it's, it's sort of launching the start of the conversation to say, these are the results found of the 18th month study of going through waste and trash.
I'd like to go from the ESP, where they recommend what they're thinking about, what you want to work on.
Yeah, we really have a lot of enthusiasm. I think all of us, I think there was unanimity about this, working on the, on the recommendations for, for the come out of the waste management study.
So you're excited about trash?
Yes, we are profoundly excited about trash, yes. We are all about it, yeah.
What other things are?
Yeah, there's less consensus on some of that. Some interest, maybe it's mostly me, on community-supported agriculture at the historical museum. I don't know, I'll let other people.
We need more chickens.
Yeah, my man.
Short on eggs.
Get my new, my new chicks tomorrow.
Nice.
What a visionary I was.
Skip the lemonade stand.
Yeah, I think water was one that kind of came up, again, not as much consensus as, as there was with waste, but the utilization of water, how the city uses water, targets for water. So water, whether it's stormwater, wastewater, drinking water, just kind of the, the catch-all for water was definitely a hot topic as well.
I mean, personally, I think water is one of the main, you know.
We're expecting you to say wine.
You could turn it into wine.
But yeah, focus on water because that's, you know, a limiting factor for Colorado, you know, for agriculture and for housing and for business as well, so I think that's important. Another thing I think I would like to see is, I mentioned to have some kind of coordination with, amongst the boards and commissions, like maybe a joint meeting with NextGen to say, hey, you know, to see what they have ideas for, things that, you know, or maybe something like that.
The Transportation Mobility Board was another one. We thought there'd probably be quite a bit of overlap with.
I second the waste, solid waste management stuff. Because I think the governance structure, especially if there were to be some sort of larger service district where we could actually see some significant cost savings in terms of management and oversight of it, the, the timing is kind of now to start laying the foundations with the neighboring municipalities about what a shared governance structure would look like for solid waste management. I mean, yeah, there's plenty of things that we can do by ourselves as a city, as we kind of went over during that, that meeting. But I think the real cost and environmental savings to our community come from sort of shared user agreements and shared service agreements, shared planning, especially around the infrastructure necessary to have expanded solid waste management services in terms of transfer stations, recycling stations and the operations of those things. It's hard for a city of our size to bear that cost by ourselves, quite frankly. So, you know, if there was a time to work on the governance piece of it, it would be now.
I think it's particularly a complex problem because it's clear that Sheridan's ahead of us and I think I'm not confident that Centennial is with us. And so, I mean, I, I think that's an important problem to work on, but I think it's also a complex problem.
Would that include composting or is that something separate?
Yeah.
I think that's something a lot of our residents have been asking for. I was actually really impressed about the diversion and composting, you know, kind of analysis part of the solid waste study report. They were really, really thorough.
Yeah, just, just as a preview, we've been talking about or hoping about a closed-loop composting option where you do curbside composting, residences, business, multifamily, et cetera. And then as a community member somehow have access to the compost or whatever garden you should want to put it to. Like, I think Denver does this, you know.
And that was actually at the Waste Diversion Summit, I think is what it was called when we went to it. One of the things, I actually think I mentioned to Brent, was kind of bringing the South Suburban piece together with the waste diversion is having some sort of, you know, yard waste composting available at South Suburban sites there because they generate a lot of organic waste that they have to deal with.
The other topic that we discussed was a little bit on electrification. I don't know if any of the board members wanted to talk about that, but I felt like there are a couple of people in the room that were specifically curious about how we're going to go about electrifying the built environment in Littleton.
Was there some discussion about buildings that are being updated? We talked about this a little bit. Is there any further discussion on that?
Yeah, actually, so Laura and I have been touched, but like, you know, in terms of the Denver Regional Council Government's decarbonization grant program, we'll actually be codifying the grant requirements and municipalities within that Dr. Cog jurisdiction will have the opportunity to get multi-year, up to, I think they're anticipating at least 60, if not more, a thousand dollars a year for four years to do policy updates for both residential and commercial building electrification code as well as have the opportunity to start looking at some of the lower income, but highest energy use residential buildings in our, in our jurisdiction that would qualify for either tax incentives or actually outright replacement. There's another part of that, which is the workforce development component. But I'll touch in base with Arapahoe Douglas Works, who are already going to get involved as well as our epic campus and their construction trades to see if we can help them build a pipeline.
What about ACC?
Yes, that too. I'm just more excited about the epic campus. But there's, there's certainly opportunity there. I think Laura, we've talked about going after some of those local grants, at least to lay down the policy foundations. I think our facilities assessment work too will kind of demonstrate which facilities are going to need the most work and when and why. And so now is kind of the time to lay down the policies for our internal facilities and how we want to essentially rebuild them and re-engineer them for the future as well. So it's all on the table, but I think in terms of like, if you, if the group has an interest in solid waste, I think having some degree of assist, I mean, Laura's got a million, you know, random request, email requests for me to manage, but I think there's an implementation timeline here that we as a city need to get a fuller understanding of because the money is going to start becoming available, actually really rather soon. Yeah, and so once that money is available, we are, need to be positioning ourselves to use it.
Well, I know when I was on council, I have a different set of memories. I think I was always okay being five minutes ahead of schedule. We're happy to leave it here and thank you all again for having us. If there's nothing else, we really do appreciate it.
Say if any ESP members have anything else they want to put in council's ears or vice versa, council to the ESP?
We've got some awesome new board members.
The one thing, remember we looked into this like way back in like 2019? Do you remember this? They did that big spreadsheet of all the different options. I think the regional approach, I think, may be the ticket.
You're talking about waste diversion?
Yeah, because it was just not cost-effective at that point in time to do it on our own.
I'm, I'm a little, first of all, 1983 is not way back. 2019 is definitely not way back.
Well, it, it just kind of died, you know, to look at, you know, like one hall or, or, you know.
Robert, I think half this table was not around in 1983, so it was way back.
That was when I graduated from high school and I'm just having trouble with that.
Sounds like a you problem.
Well, I'm making it all of ours, aren't I?
It seems like a long time ago.
Well, great, well, thank you all for coming.
Thank you for working.
Thank you.
This is really good.
Yeah, I can recognize Laura's work too. She hasn't been with the city for very long, but she has very quickly engaged and I think supported this group and has really carried the spirit and the kind of, you know, passion that this council has had for this issue. And so I just wanted to say thank you.
Indispensable, thank you Laura. All right, thanks so much.
Thank you. So changing of the guard here, we're going to have, do you want to take a, just a short recess?
Make a run?
Take a short break and then we'll switch out for. All right. We are back here with the representatives for the Urban Land Institute to do some tap dancing.
You stepped on my lines.
Scratch that one. Village, so welcome. Thank you.
Thanks. And I'm just going to flip it to our deputy city manager Kathleen Osher, who's leading our Geneva Village initiative, and she can take it from here with our team.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Kathleen Osher, deputy city manager. I'm joined this evening by Rodney Milton, executive director of the Urban Land Institute Colorado chapter, and then also Julie Latham, our housing policy analyst. So we're going to kind of do a three-part presentation. I'm going to kick us off this evening. I do think it's wonderful as part of your retreat that we got some shared language around public engagement. Because as we walk through tonight's efforts towards our partnership with the Urban Land Institute and the technical advisory panel, I do want to start off by talking about what this is. And tonight is really an opportunity to inform you about what's moving forward. There are opportunities for some small stakeholder engagement as part of this process, but the larger public engagement is really something that we would look to as a future step. So they're not decisions that will come through this technical advisory panel. It really is an exercise in brainstorming and an opportunity for us to potentially identify some short, medium, and long-term next steps. And then it would come back to council to decide how we would progress through that. So I just want to be clear, particularly for any members of the community that are here, is that while this is a brainstorming exercise, all of the things that we're dedicated to doing in terms of public engagement would be future steps as part of that. So today, we're going to talk a little bit about some of the history. This is obviously going to be a walk down memory lane for council because you've been driving a lot of this work relative to Geneva Village. But just to kind of talk through the focus that you've put on downtown, the creation of that downtown development authority, how you've worked through the passage of the vision plan and concept plan for Project Downtown, the direction that you provided relative to Geneva Village. We'll also go through some of that history with the project as well. We'll talk a little bit about our application for the technical advisory panel. And then as part of that next steps, we'll kind of turn over to Rodney to talk specifically about what that process looks like. And I think also share a little bit about ULI Colorado and really some of the partnerships they're finding great success with in supporting municipalities. So that downtown focus has really been one that council has supported since 2019. It came across clearly, it's interesting as you go back and read the vision statement that council adopted in 2018. There were really three things that the community found great consensus about as priority. And they were, this is interesting because take yourselves back in time to 2019, the river and the Mary Carter Greenway downtown and the light rail that connected us to the greater region. And so downtown has always played a sort of a prominent void, a prominent piece to how people have identified with what makes Littleton very special. Obviously, some highlights through our comprehensive economic development strategy and plan. And then, you know, called out as the number one most urgent and most important priority as part of your retreat in 2024, to complete that project downtown and the concept plan there. As part of some of the work in the earlier years, property owners, particularly in light of and in response to COVID and the impact that it had on small business, did approach the city in 2020 to really talk about that idea of what the future evolution of downtown would be and where there were opportunities to invest in that, how they as a community could kind of come together. So that was happening sort of in conjunction as well. So that reality check in working with property owners and businesses downtown led to the city supporting an effort to look at the feasibility of creating a district in downtown. And council member Drew Skoll helped serve on that steering committee. And many of them came together to really identify the objectives of looking at those market dynamics in downtown, really how a district could respond, what the opportunities would be there, as well as look at the variety of tools that could be used. Now, you'll remember through all of that work that they identified a downtown development authority as the way to organize themselves. And council took those steps to form the DDA after a vote of the people within the district that was identified and defined as part of that ballot measure. DDAs can use a couple of different tools, including tax increment finance, which you'll remember, and then also a mill levy to support their efforts. They did move forward to tax themselves to create that source of revenue to help support a district as it moved forward. They also came together as part of that steering committee to draft up a plan of development, which is always sort of a weird title, but it really is that both visionary document, but communicates exactly what the DDA would hope to contribute as part of their work over the next thirty years. So that plan of development came to council, planning commission, went through all of that process, and really did, it was adopted in 2023, the district formed in 2022. The goals, you know, each time the DDA comes back to you, they really identify these five goals that they have, that idea of beautiful and welcoming, well-connected, clean and safe, that improved parking experience and business-friendly and vibrant. So that put us in a position to have that sort of unified voice in downtown, which was a helpful tool as we went through Project Downtown. So I'll go through this piece quickly because you remember the effort of Project Downtown really focused on that mobility, place-making, pedestrian safety, the streetscape improvements, and really adding that green infrastructure. And obviously, the close partnership that we had with the DDA going through that process. So you adopted that vision plan just recently in November. It also included a vision for Prince Street, which kind of leads us to that Northern Gateway, which includes city-owned property Geneva Village. So I'm going to turn it over to Julie just to kind of go through some of that history and the steps that we've taken relative to Geneva Village.
Thank you, Kathleen. I'm also going to be brief on this, even though most of you are along for the process. So the International Geneva Association purchased the property in 1927 and converted it to a retreat and care facility for former hospitality employees. They constructed the lodge for those purposes. In 1964, Geneva Village, which are twenty-eight apartments that were designed by Eugene Sternberg, were built for retired married members. Life had changed a little bit, and rather than the single members that were housed in the lodge, they wanted to accommodate families as part of their operations. Overall, the property is five parcels and was purchased by the city in 1975 as part of the overall land purchase for the new city administration building. Ultimately, the land that Geneva Village sits on was not needed for the city facilities. And so South Metro Housing Option, the city's housing authority, managed the property until 2019. Geneva Village Apartments are not historically designated, but they are eligible. The lodge is designated historically locally and nationally. So in 2022, council started considering the potential options and alternatives for the site. Everyone conducted a lengthy review of all of the multiple considerations that are listed up here. There's a lot to balance between the residence, the historic architecture, the potential for future development and more affordable housing, as well as prudent stewardship of the property and the lesser residents who were on site. So after careful consideration, council directed staff to chart a course to redevelop the property in support of the city's goals since September of 2023, with the principles that are outlined here. And we're supporting that Northern Gateway emphasis, looking at majority affordable residential use, really incorporating Eugene Sternberg principles and partnership with private owners and the LDDA, and also expanding community and downtown connections and amenities. This is an overview of the timeline of those discussions, as well as the resident support that occurred and where we are at today. This map identifies the core study area that is identified for the ULI TAP. The blue items are tier one, and those are the Geneva Village Apartments. The green area are the rest of the city-owned properties, including the City Center Building and Geneva Lodge. And then the tier three are the pink items noted. They're selected as they are additional areas of influence on the site and potential further opportunities. They include the Arapahoe County Administration Building, along with some retail and housing.
So those next steps, we've been sharing this presentation with some of your authorities, boards, and commissions. So Julie and I presented to the Historical Preservation Commission and then the Littleton Downtown Development Authority. We do, what's not listed here is we have found a date within Planning Commission's calendar to share this information with them as well. We're here tonight. We plan to do some outreach with those property owners that are primarily in those pink areas of the core area in April and May. And then we've set and worked with Rodney's team to identify May 21st and 22nd. So again, it's a, it's sort of a very concentrated process. And so this is the perfect opportunity to turn it over to Rodney. But I'm happy to answer any questions if you have some on this piece of the presentation. Yes.
I'm interested in what you have there. What kind of feedback did you get from those organizations that will help with this process?
Yeah, so I think interest in identifying two members to be part of those stakeholder conversations, for sure. I think also interest in, once we go through the two-day process, what we've negotiated with ULI is we would do a presentation of the initial recommendations. And then their staff works to produce a report that kind of captures all of that conversation, as well as the sort of roll-up-your-sleeves work that's done through the technical advisory panel. So all of the presentations that we've done, there's keen interest in us coming back and presenting that final report. So we'll kind of work with the ULI staff. I think there's also a lot of interest in what it will identify and how that might influence their future work plans. So we definitely heard that from HBC.
So basically, they didn't give you ideas of what they were thinking. They just said, yes, we want to participate. Yes. So the stakeholder group, can you speak a little bit more to that, or is this premature what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think we can do, we can kind of tag-team that as part of Rodney's presentation. But yeah, I will say, as you probably looked through the application that we submitted to the Urban Land Institute, we're being very cognizant of trying to structure that in terms of the city's long-term goals. You know, so those five goals that kind of are that evolution of both the comprehensive plan and embedded in your strategic plan. So we are kind of looking at a way that we can structure those stakeholder conversations about the long-term goals and then work to produce a report that really speaks to those as well. So it's easy for us to blend that into future plating efforts, like future comprehensive plan or transportation master plan, that we kind of know where there's a home for each of the findings.
I'm kind of more interested in school practices than these organizations.
Any questions, council?
Man. I know. I wish it were a touchscreen.
I think it's more of, rather than building the process, more of a just, this is what's going on, what's going on, more of just an information session, not necessarily looking for huge input of how to change things.
Where does the input come from, or am I jumping ahead on your presentation?
Jumping ahead.
Okay, I'll wait.
But to explain what the TAP is and what they're going to do, that's what it was. It wasn't to...
It wasn't to get feedback.
Wasn't to get feedback of how to do it. It was just saying, this is what we are doing.
But they're going to propose the town.
No, it's, uh... It's funny.
It's in their summer. Memorial's probably a little...
Presidential Library?
All right. All right, so good evening, everybody. Like Kathleen mentioned, I'm Rodney Bilton, executive director of ULI Colorado. I am a city planner by trade, and so this is giving me a bit of PTSD because I forgot how much, I forgot how much I love presenting in front of city council. No, I'm kidding. This is a natural environment for me and especially keen because, you know, ULI Colorado in particular is really engaged in trying to make sure that we are a valuable partner to the public sector. So I'll go over a little bit about, like, kind of quick spiel of what ULI is, and then we'll jump right into the process and I'll open it up for any questions. So the best quick version of what I tell my mom I do is ULI is like a think tank, right? And we're an organization whose members shape cities and create places. That is so impactful. It is so, it requires such a high degree of coordination that you have to convene. You've got to, you know, look at best practices. You've got to be multidisciplinary in your approach, and so that's essentially what ULI is. It's a member organization, highly diverse, highly disciplinarily focused, multidisciplinary. And so that is the core of what we do. We are where the future is built, so that's a tagline that we use. But honestly, every member of the built environment, anything that touches parks, rec, all these things, that is ULI in a nutshell. Next. We are a nonprofit. We are 501(c)(3). We do not lobby. We do not advocate. So this is truly an outsider sort of third-party lens that we provide as a service. We are supported by our annual sponsorship donors and folks who recognize the value of ULI and what we bring to the table. And so that is where our funding generally comes from. For our TAPS and technical advisory panels, we do have grants from Dr. Cog. Or I try not to do acronyms. I said that would be my, it's Lent for me, so I'm sorry to say. That's what I'm trying to focus on. But the Denver Regional Council of Governments, they provide support for us to take on these TAPS. This is my very small but capable team. You will probably be most familiar in working with Hannah King, who's our director. But Kayla Lino is the senior manager and T. Angela Willhite are also members of my team. Those two live in Littleton, so Kayla and Hannah live in Littleton. And so they'll be probably really focused on what comes out of this. ULI Colorado in particular, as a district council, is over twenty-five years old. We were founded in 1998. ULI overall is 1930s. And so as an organization, we've been around for a very long time. We are multidisciplinary, and I say that because there are a lot of different factors in the development process. So I mentioned before, I'm a city planner, but we've got developers, we've got architects, we've got anyone in the design and, you know, design capacity. We've got nonprofits, public officials, city managers, the like. Anybody touching the built environment is generally a member of ULI. We are forty-seven thousand members globally. And why that's important is because when I talk about what we're intending to do for you as an advisory service, that's the network I'm talking about tapping. All right. Locally, we're about thirteen hundred-plus members strong in Colorado, so we're about the eighth-largest district council in the network. And while most of our members are represented in the greater Denver area, along the Front Range, we are ULI Colorado. And so we do have members in the Mountain West, up in the mountains, and across the state. All right, so among the myriad of things that we do, one of the principal ways that we engage with the public sector is through our technical advisory panels. is through our technical advisory panels. There's one version of that that is sort of the two-day process that we'll talk about. But ULI National also has an Advisory Services Panel that is a five-day, very intense process. I say that because about a couple of weeks ago, I would say, we had the ASP, our Advisory Services Panel, in Colorado Springs. These are the most recent TAPS and Advisory Services Panels that we've convened in the community. So we had one in Steamboat Springs. Is anybody familiar with Brown's Ranch? No? Okay, well, they had a particularly sticky issue with affordable housing and trying to develop workforce housing for a five-hundred-plus-acre site, right? And so deciding what to do, how to prioritize their approach to that, how to bring the community along, they brought together an ASP, or Advisory Services Panel, to deal with that. One of the principal recommendations was you need a development partner, and they took that advice. The Housing Authority had led that effort. They took that advice. It's the first thing that they did. Spirit Boulevard was another ASP that we conducted. City of Boulder had a TAP last summer. City of Brighton had a TAP last summer. Superior in Lewisville, the Marshall Fire, was another ASP. And then City of Edgewater City had a recent TAP. So what the heck is a TAP? It is, think of it this way. Each municipality tends to have issues or tends to have parcels that they don't know what to do with. Or there may be lots of versions of what they want to do with it, but they don't know how to prioritize. Or they know how to prioritize, but there may be a version of that, that there's sort of like a catalytic thing that they're looking to accomplish that they can't see, right? And so what a TAP for us is, is we take that scope of work, those set of problems that you initiate, and we look at our membership and say, who are the smartest, best, and brightest folks who deal with this particular issue? If it's land use, if it's retail, if it's mixed use, we have access to the best and the brightest in the country, but also in your locality, to tap their expertise, there it is, for sort of opining on that particular issue. Okay? So oftentimes, you may see all of the issues. You may be familiar with them. Sometimes you need a third party to come in and say, this is what you need to do next, and you need to do this first, and you need that. Because oftentimes, how many of you have children? Okay, do you know when your children are growing? Like, you see them every day. You have no idea. I come to you and I'm like, oh, my gosh, she's gotten so big, right? A third-party lens of what you need, right? I'm sure all of you guys think that your children are the smartest in the world, and they might be.
Are you here to tell us otherwise?
They might be. But, but you may be blind to the fact that your child needs X, Y, Z, and a little bit of stimulus and growth on other things. I'm saying that because I used to be a teacher before I was a city planner, and I know all of you care about your children. But you don't, you need a third party to look at them, right? So I'm sure this is your baby. This is something that you care about. We, the process really works towards, and Kathleen and her team gather all the background information on the particular site. They gather all the previous planning efforts that you've completed. It respects those things. It synthesizes those, and we dump those on our panel of experts in a two-year timeframe, and they essentially evaluate those. If you go to the next slide, this is a typical two-day agenda. And so prior to, so right now Kathleen has already pulled together a briefing deck. And that briefing pulls together all of those plans that we're talking about. We also have panelists and sort of advisors that are very familiar with this community, have worked with you in the past, and so we're not starting from scratch. But those panelists then digest that information. They do a project tour, so they tour the study area. And then, to your point, Councilmember Grove. You, Kathleen gives us, and you all give us, a list of folks to speak with, right? And that stakeholder list is not the same as a community engagement planning effort, right? So I've done comp plans, neighborhood plans, city plans, street plans, all kinds of planning efforts that include community engagement. This is lighter and faster and swifter and more direct. It's not like a community engagement. But it is a stakeholder engagement effort. And so we go through about two to three hours of stakeholder interviews, where the most important conversations happen when they are the most candid. So we're asking them for particular candor. Tell us what's really going on. Tell us from your point of view what the challenges you see are, and they give us all of that. And then the panelists take time to evaluate that. They talk amongst themselves. We have a writer in the room that's sort of taking notes of those things. They begin to process that information. Then we go out to dinner, which is a more relaxed setting to gather information and the like. And then that next day, they start workshopping recommendations. And so you will be provided with best practices, with catalytic next steps, right? Things that you may have known but didn't understand how to prioritize. That's the benefit of this group bringing together their expertise, their understanding, and their ability to move things forward. We then have Q and A, right, and then we do a presentation. There's two deliverables that come out of this. It's a presentation that they give the next day. And then a couple of months later, there's a full report that comes out of that. Now, communities can do, at this stage, a few different things, and I've seen different varieties of this. So city council, who that led a stakeholder event for Colorado Springs, debuted theirs to a hundred stakeholders, a hundred invitees. I didn't even realize this, but I was on the news. I got family who lives in Pueblo, and they thought I was famous. It was fantastic for a couple days. But their goal was, we want to share this, and we want to get it adopted by city council. That's one way to do it. We had another where it was really just the staff that really wanted to make sure they vetted it first before it went out to the community. You can do it that way as well. It's yours. But we essentially take your lead as to how broad, how wide you want to share it. And then we are ULI Colorado, so we are here, and our panelists are here. So when you begin the implementation process, that's where we come into play as well.
Who's the client? Am I going to lunch? Are we having lunch together?
Yes, I was gonna just ask Kathleen to speak to where the city council might plug into these.
Yeah, so I think we're looking at a couple of opportunities as probably two members of council as part of those stakeholder groups. But then also as part of that dinner and conversation, that informal conversation, and then a role for council with that presentation. So we are thinking a broader community presentation of the recommendations from the TAP panel. And so I think those are, those are the ones that are really obvious for now. And then as we, we're kind of in the process now of developing what those stakeholder groups would look like. So I think we'd like to understand, would council like to play a role in identifying who are part of those conversations? We could bring back a draft for council to think through. And then, you know, with that dinner, I think that is a genuine opportunity for all seven of you to have that interaction with the technical advisory panel and kind of learn what they've both seen and some of the opportunities that they've seen through the course of that first day, so that you have that opportunity. And I know that they would greatly benefit from that. The client is the city of Littleton, so that is you. So that informal interaction, I think, is really beneficial as they pull into the second day and kind of go through their recommendations.
So I should put a hold on the...
What time frame are we talking about?
Twenty-first.
Yeah, so we've confirmed dates now, so May twenty-first and May twenty-second. And then we've identified, when you come back from your summer break, is about the timing. We think the report will be ready. So that would be another piece that we'll embed in as part of a study session with council. So we'll start putting those holds on your calendar and look forward to kind of thinking through those next steps as well.
And then do we give input to the stakeholder group?
She just asked if they want to come back to the draft. Stats will...
Yeah.
For your work.
So, and again, how we've structured the application and how we're thinking through those stakeholder groups is that we would identify, based on your strategic plan and the comprehensive plan, the areas of influence within each of those five long-term goals. So if we take robust and resilient economy, for example, that's where a lot of your housing work is embedded. So we would think about that housing piece and economic development and maybe some other factors kind of in that market space, retail, small business, and try and have that combined conversation because we think that'll be beneficial in sort of identifying potential short, mid, and long-term steps relative to achieving that robust and resilient long-term goal. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay. So my understanding is that ULI does plan that step, and I get to invite you all.
Any other questions?
So if all the stakeholders come from a list from the city, or you guys find someone your own?
Correct.
The expert panel will be from...
From next... Yeah.
And then my other question, maybe it was before my time, but did we decide that this was an area for majority affordable? I know it was when it was in operation, but is that up for discussion? Is that part of the recommendation that's going to go on to their panel? Because I feel like that would very much limit what...
If that's the whole thing, it's nothing but...
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
That was a principle that the council had.
It was just on that.
Well, that was an idea of what could happen, but not what...
Yeah, I think part of the previous council discussions did identify affordability and housing. So I think we were trying to, the way we put together the application is to provide enough flexibility that they bring all of their creativity to bear. And so that may yield some just new ideas for us. And so we're trying to not necessarily limit, and within that core study area, that they kind of... Well, I mean, sometimes you can come up with some crazy ideas, and we'll call them out as crazy.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's the ideas. Yeah, yeah, a technical panel come and say, you know, just making stuff up here, like, oh, this doesn't make sense for housing here, or this doesn't make sense for business here, or this doesn't make sense for municipal building or whatever here. This is what you might be better idea. That's the hope.
Or, or, you know, given my experience, what I've seen, the unit mix, the programming efforts, like where you are within the corridor, what time, you know, those sort of things, they bring that to the table because they're coming with a vast swath of expertise. So I listened to you all as you're asking questions. Some general question, what are the best practices within this space? Who's doing what where that works? These are types of questions that you, this is what they do. They bring that to bear on this particular topic area.
I think we're also eager for the advice and creativity on process and some advice from people who've done it about even fundamental questions that many of you have asked. And then we're thinking about, you know, what's the best approach to a project like that? Do we, you know, partner? Is it a, you know, public-private partnership? Is it where the city would be the developer? Do we, you know, sell it to someone? All of those questions are also what we can benefit from, from the experts, so.
Absolutely.
And I've had the honor of sitting on a TAP, and it is a really intense process. And I think that part of what came out, so that was the one that I sat on was for the city of Austin. And it was both a process conversation about how to step through next steps, what that community engagement piece looked like. But then it was just really very tangible steps that the city could take in terms of how to support through staffing or through partnership, those catalytic next steps. And so, man, I never got work so hard, though.
I've done too.
It was super intense. I was glad I got fed. That was about the...
Lots of caffeine, too.
Lots of, lots of, like, long days.
I've personally done two as a panelist. It's for real.
No, I appreciate the willingness of people to share their expertise, so I'm very grateful for it. But do you mind going back to the map and just helping me understand these different regions, the pink, blue, and green, and kind of what?
You need the study area.
The property itself, such a property.
Right, but are you gonna be making recommend, I, I, you know, my assumption is you're gonna make recommendations around things to do in the blue area. So I'm curious as to what, how the recommendations may also, I mean, it's just you're taking into consideration the pink and the green? I mean, just how, how, I'm just, how are we thinking about this space and the scope of the ULI's work, or of the TAPS work? Sorry, not the ULI.
And so the previous council conversations, we had kind of been a little bit in a holding pattern to get that plan of development adopted. So we really are using this to see if there are opportunities to further the Northern Gateway. So we're asking the TAP to kind of reflect on the greater area. Now, obviously, anything in pink, just not ours, right? And so, and there are existing uses in that green space. We know that council has expressed some interest in greater flexibility in that blue space. So we're trying to tier that so that they, they're taking the right approach to how they reflect on those, right? Because you don't want to alarm anyone in the pink. But, but we do, we do think that that Northern Gateway is an important piece that if we were to do something in the blue, for example, how could that create future opportunities or return on that investment that we make to see other private investment follow?
Now, when we discussed that previously, the city-owned property, it was kind of look at holistically. You know, what we do in Geneva Village impacts the rest of the property. And there would probably be some replating of property lines and things like the parcel lines right there. But also, I mean, to me, look at the pink is the ones that are the private property that's immediately adjacent to this, that just immediately, you know, impacts or is impacted by that property. Okay, thank you. Do you have some else?
No, well, yes, thank you. Just the idea that, you know, when you look at that green and the city's parcel, there's a lot of, there's a lot of square footage there, and there's a lot of park. You know, I think as we look at Geneva Village, we need to have that context and think about, you know, how we're using all of that green, and I think there will be some opportunities.
I'm perfectly comfortable with thinking about, I'm not uncomfortable with anything. I just, you know, the pink is not ours, and so I was just trying to understand that. That's all I was trying to...
And then, you know, in terms of those next steps, we are working with a third party to have some of those conversations with private property owners, one, so they stay informed, and also if there are opportunities to learn about things that they're thinking about and ways that they may be considering reinvestment on a longer horizon, that we have a better understanding so that can help inform the panel as well.
Just say, like, in the kind of analysis of the alternatives that we're gonna be looking at, I would say, like, go to, like, the lengths of all the extremes of, like, full city involvement, control in terms of the development process, you know, going to the limits on, like, affordability and housing-only versus selling it entirely. I think what at least I would like to see is, like, kind of just the financial pros and cons that span the breadth of those options, because so rarely do we get this opportunity to have to do this. Like, I think we're, I don't wanna say adrift, but essentially, there's so much potential in front of us is that we'll just need some way of kind of grading and evaluating all those options kinds of, you know, in comparison with one another, in terms of that.
Almost scenario planning of, you know, scenario A, scenario B, this approach, this approach.
Yeah, so feel free to, like, I know we had some kind of common sense of values and ideals in terms of, like, what we could do with that property. But, you know, I think for the purposes of our future planning, it should kind of range as far and wide as we possibly can. But thanks for jumping on board.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Helping out.
I will say, you know, back to what ULI is and our focus areas, we just underwent a strategic planning effort to kind of narrow our focus and really be thoughtful about how we drive impact. So housing affordability, the impact of the regulatory environment, and downtowns are our core focus over the next three years. And then public sector engagement, involvement, and support is a primary opportunity for us. Again, you know, I personally, I'm public sector. I grew up in places like this, so I'm very familiar. But I also think there are other opportunities for us to engage. So there's another product that is not a technical advisory panel, but I think would be highly valuable, which is our urban plan. So ULI, because of what we do, we stand in between the public and private sector and combine those two and build trust. Urban Plan is a development scenario program, if you will, where it takes, it was designed originally for high school students twenty-plus years ago, but it has evolved... But it has evolved into a really good tool to educate either the public, public sector officials like yourselves. As to what the development process looks like from a scenario basis, right? So it's a RFP that you all would be responding to as dawning roles and responsibilities. A financial advisor, a site planner, all of that in response to a city proposal. And it teaches you trade offs in the development process. So again, I was a city planner. I didn't see a development pro forma until two or three years into my profession. But that includes that and you can see what those trade offs are because a lot of city officials are somewhat like, why isn't this happening? Why isn't this? If we incentivize and it helps you guide you through that process so that you can get up to speed. As to the different facets of the entire development process and just get you on board. We conducted this workshop with the City Council of Denver. We've done recently fifteen mayors in Metro Mayor's Caucus that went through that process. It's, it's an incredible way of educating yourself, of getting together with your, your other folks to understand what the development process is. And particularly those trade offs and the financial implications of doing certain things for one reason. So this is another opportunity for us.
Questions? What's important?
Yeah.
It's labor, come on, come on. I came this far, come on.
Have a piece, have a piece of chocolate.
It is, it's Girl Scout cookie season, I've been going crazy, I don't need any.
I don't take it personal.
Thank you, thanks for your presentation.
Yes, thank you very much, appreciate you sharing.
I'm forward to working with you all.
Likewise.
Julie and I are sticking around for the next presentation.
I think I will too.
This is a housing update.
Yes.
All right, item three is just update on, on housing policy here in Littleton, so. Turn to our team.
Kathleen?
Yep. Didn't talk enough to the last presentation up there.
Right, exactly, like my, trying out my dead mouse skills there.
Really enjoying that.
Not at all. I'm actually turning it over to Julie. I'm here in just a supportive role, but just do want to start with, one, my appreciation to, to council and recognizing. Where we were in our housing journey and, and the support that we needed from that policy standpoint. To not only create the position in a temporary fashion, but translate that into a permanent position for us. And it's been so rewarding to work alongside with Julie as we develop some of this. Very important and long range planning for what, how the city wants to proceed on this, this housing journey. I think it's been this combination of thinking forward, but it's also been very grounded in some of the tools that the council has provided for us. Namely, the inclusionary housing ordinance and what it takes to get that from just a policy document to. You know, a day to day practice that, and an expectation of every project that comes to the city. Of how important affordable housing is and, and how we prioritize that and make sure that we can help them navigate that. So I just really want to acknowledge all of the hard work. You will see that in terms of what's been happening in 2024 and as we look forward in 2025. But my deep appreciation for all, all the work that Julie's been doing to help shepherd us through this. So turn it over to you and I'll try and get these slides right.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And I also just want to echo and say thank you for the continued support and also for the opportunity to come in here tonight to discuss the city's housing efforts. I'm going to walk through an overview of that work and provide some updates on the 2024 work, the plans for 2025. And also several discussion items that we're looking for some input and feedback on.
Wait, can I ask you to speak up just for a minute?
Is it picking me up? I'm trying to and I'm recovering from a cold, so bear with me.
Pam, you can also move to the front row, you might be able to hear better, too.
None of us can hear. Then can you hear that one?
It is.
And speak to us, please include us.
Well, it's a meeting for us here, so they're talking, presenting to us. Continue, Julie.
So just as a reminder, the Horizon 2027 Strategic Plan identified the housing initiative of cultivating a favorable environment for housing development across all income levels as urgent. As part of those strategic plan conversations and process, staff committed to providing a progress update in the first quarter, which is what we are presenting today. The focused areas and available tools for the city's housing efforts include regulatory, financial partnerships, communication. And my personal favorite, special projects. I'm going to walk us through some of the efforts that are happening under each of these. But as we do that, I do want to note that all of this work is a balancing act. There is a lot of work and there's a lot of potential opportunities for future work. And it takes time both to develop and execute policy as well as to understand the results as they come in. We can see that, you know, with the inclusionary housing ordinance where it passed two years ago. And we are still two years later building out process and just now starting to see the results. But additionally note that the state legislation since 2023 has been time consuming and has added a lot of work and planning in this space. Starting off with the regulatory tools, the 2024 work focused on that busy state legislative session. As well as supporting the neighborhood housing opportunities Unified Land Use Code update. I know council recently heard presentations on some of the legislation that requires code updates for this year. So I will touch upon some of the other ones that do not require code updates this year, but still require work to understand as well as implement. So the House Bill 241313, which is the transit oriented communities bill. Worked through assessing earlier versions of the bill prior to passage to really understand the impact on the city. With some of the guidance that those draft bills had. Once the bill passed in May, we have worked on providing feedback to the state on their guidelines, which are currently sitting at 125 pages. As well as working to test, working as a test community to test their draft models for the calculations for housing opportunity goals as well as the zoning capacity. That work is going to continue in 2025. The state recently, at the end of February, published the final calculation tools. The preliminary housing opportunity goal report is due on June 30th. This report is just limited to calculating that housing opportunity goal as well as identifying any of the zoning districts that. Might qualify as transit centers, as well as providing the zoning standards for those districts. For Littleton, that's likely going to be the corridor mixed multifamily residential. Some of the downtown districts and the neighborhood zones that allow for cottage court communities. Because in order to qualify, the density needs to be 15 density units per acre. And those are the areas that will allow for that. The final report, which will include the evidence that the city is meeting the housing opportunity goal through its zoning capacity, is not due until the end of 2026. This report is also going to require the identification of which affordability and displacement strategies the city has adopted. As well as providing an administrative process for multifamily units for parcels that are under five acres in size. And there are also community engagement requirements as part of it as well. There is a lot of information in this bill. As I mentioned, the guidelines are 125 pages. So it's going to take us some time to really fully work through, fully process and understand all of the impacts and create these reports. The state is still working on those reporting templates for what that's going to look like. So more to come on that, but significant work on that going forward. The next piece of legislation is SB 24174, which is the Housing Needs Planning Assessment. This bill sets out the requirements for communities to complete their housing needs assessments as well as housing action plans. Happily, the Denver Regional Council of Governments completed a regional housing needs assessment recently. And they have preliminary approval that, that will fit within the guidelines of the state legislation. So we are looking to join and use that regional housing needs assessment to satisfy Littleton's requirements as part of this legislation. The legislation does have a comment period in order that cities have to participate in. And to, in order to be accepted that we, we agree, we've had this conversation, we want to be a part of this. We are anticipating that, that commenting period and that feedback period is going to open up sometime this summer. Dr. Cog will be presenting on June 10th on the regional housing needs assessment overall, just the information that's contained within. But also it's an opportunity to kind of understand further information on what that commenting and review process will look like. What I've heard initially is it's not anything really complicated. It might just be providing that information in a memo, it could be a meeting, and then just receiving that feedback and noting this feedback.
So my assumption is that presentation will be like a online presentation?
So we're actually having them come and present to council during your study session on June 10th. So it's just, the timing is, is great to sort of front load. Here's what the assessment is, here's what we think that process of commenting will be like. Let's have some discussion directly with Dr. Cog's staff and, and then we'll kind of, there's more to come on the specifics of what will be required of us. But we, we want to make sure that council has a good understanding of what, what we're seeing on a regional basis.
Great, thank you.
I actually had a quick question and thank you for taking my emails on the time line and everything on this as well. Do you know if the legislation, since it does allow for the, the FPO to be kind of the regional housing, you know, body. But it does say that the municipalities have to open up individual public comment periods. Do you know if the Dr. Cog staff are planning on like consolidating comments? It would be interesting to see again if, if many jurisdictions, I imagine most of the jurisdictions within the Dr. Cog region. Are going to try to take this path and not do it independently, at least that's the impression I'm getting. But it would also make a lot of sense that if we facilitate a public feedback or comment period as a city, that it feeds into Dr. Cog, right?
So what's interesting is I had the same question is what does that public feedback mean? Is it everyone in the public, is it council? And I don't know if this is going to shift and change around as all of these guidelines are kind of being sorted out. The initial feedback I had was it was a council feedback.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if that's going to shift, we'll find out. That was the preliminary. I know there are other places and spaces where we'll need to do some public engagement surrounding some of this legislation.
Yeah, and I think that needs assessment completed last year now is kind of moving into that regional housing needs and strategies component. So there, there has been some engagement, it's been more stakeholder engagement at that, at that process. Now, as they move into that strategy, so, you know, I had the chance to serve on that advisory group for the needs assessment. My participation has been asked for the strategy piece. So I'm curious to learn more about, as we move into strategies, is there going to be a more robust engagement phase with that? So I think there's more to come because there may be a couple of different pathways to get greater public participation.
And my understanding is the next phase of that report should be first quarter next year sometime?
Yeah.
Kind of looking through some of the recommendations and best practices.
Yeah, I think they're looking to kick off in April, is my understanding.
Just voted to move forward, so yeah, they should be kicking off immediately.
Two other items to note on this one is the bill does require water and strategic growth elements as a part of the city's comprehensive plans. Those are due at the end of 2026. So those are some parameters that we will need to sort through, process on how we want to address that. Also, the housing action plan is not due until 2028, so we will have some time on that. But my understanding is individual cities need to adopt their own housing action plans. So that will be a situation where we cannot just tag on to Dr. Cog. But I think that work will be very great in informing the strategies that we want to adopt moving forward and make sure we're cooperating regionally to have the most effective strategies. Legislation is fun. Next up is House Bill 241175, the right of first refusal and the right of first offer. This is legislation that was kind of intended as a preservation strategy, recognizing that a lot of properties that. Were funded through the low income housing tax credit program have 30 year affordability periods. Lytech was created in the 1980s. We've seen a lot of properties that are rolling off of that affordability period. And so there's a real risk that you lose affordable units in your community. So what this bill does is it creates two rights that are granted to a city, the right of first refusal and the right of first offer. The right of first refusal applies to multi, existing multifamily affordable properties that are five or more units. So within Littleton, that's going to be properties that are owned by SMHO, Grove Wood and the several Lytech properties that we have in town. And it provides the city the right, if it is going up for sale, to refuse or purchase that property if they so desire. The other one is the right of first offer. That one applies to multifamily units that are between, multifamily properties between 15 and 100 units that are over 30 years old. In Littleton, we've identified 57 properties that that applies to, although that does also wrap in the existing SMHO, Grove Wood and Lytech properties. If the, so the right of first offer, if someone's selling their property, has to come into the city and notify them before they go to market. And say, you have the right to give us the first offer to purchase this property. The property, if the city wishes to exercise that, has to be used, has to continue as affordable property. You cannot redevelop it, it needs to continue on as affordable. There are some, you know, the other option for the city is to assign that over to a housing authority or other agency. There are some significant kind of obstacles in the timelines that are outlined in the bill. Because, you know, you don't want to hold up a deal, so there are some pretty tight timelines if you want to exercise that right. So it really creates a position where you need to have a lot of cash on hand and be ready to move quickly. Also, you know, some of these properties are over 30 years old, they, so they can come with significant maintenance needs in addition to the purchase price of the property. So the city did receive its first right of first refusal notification in the fall and handled it with city and council on a one off basis. Assigning it over to South Metro Housing Options. So just looking this evening, you know, kind of given the limited city resources and general policy direction that's steering away from residential property management. Kind of the approach of if these come in, it probably makes a lot of sense to assign them to the housing authority if they are interested in pursuing. That deal is an option, so just looking for some confirmation this evening that that is the preferred approach going forward if we get more of those in. This bill does sunset, I think it's in 2027, so it is a limited period of time for these opportunities.
What options would we have if we decided to purchase something and didn't turn it over? Would we end up being landlords?
Yes.
That's still my preference.
You want to be. Assign them over?
I was like, you want to be a landlord?
That's not my preference.
I was just curious if there was any other options besides.
It's, you can waive your right if you want, you can assign it over or you can exercise the right.
Essentially, assigning it over means asking SMHO to evaluate whether they could make, taking over that property pencil in. And I think we heard from Corey last time that if they use HUD money to close the deal, it's very hard to make it pencil in. So the fund, I mean, essentially what we're saying is for this stock of housing, once its 30 years under Lytech. Period goes away, it's no longer going to be affordable, it's probably not going to be affordable housing if this is our strategy.
Potentially it could change, that's.
It's at risk, right?
It's not.
Some of them do have longer affordability periods as well, some of them have extended periods like.
But the ones that come up during this.
It can be a risk.
Yeah, the ones that come up during this next five year period.
Although, to be fair, the, sorry to interrupt, but the, the ones that are 30 plus units, those are not affordable currently, right? They, they're probably naturally occurring affordable, they're not necessarily affordable, they're just older properties that might be that naturally occurring affordable piece of it. But then there's the other specific designated affordable ones.
Right, but I mean, our biggest, we, we can't sustain the amount of affordable housing in our community now. By having SMHO build more affordable housing. Because most of our affordable housing is naturally occurring affordable housing. And so, I mean, that's our biggest, if we, if we want to maintain our goal of a diversity of housing options. Our top priority, I think, needs to be how do we sustain what we already have? And so this creates, I mean, we, I just think we need to think a lot harder about how we're going to do that.
I'm going to touch upon that in a little bit.
Is that our responsibility, though? Is that what South Metro Housing is supposed to be doing?
I, I feel like council's established the goal to maintain a diverse set of housing options.
We have a tremendous diverse set of housing throughout Littleton currently.
Right, we do. We, and I think we have more diverse housing options than any community kind of from here south to Colorado Springs. And, and so.
Is it the goal of government to dictate housing, to, to figure out the housing, affordable housing? I just, I don't think that's the, the, the direction of government.
The council's current goal is to maintain.
I'm not talking about government in general.
The council's current goal is to maintain a diverse set of housing options in our community. That's our current goal, right? And I'm saying. Right, and I'm saying to sustain that goal over time, the biggest threat to sustaining that is is what is now naturally occurring affordable housing and it becoming not affordable. And so if we're going to meet our goal, and we always have the option to change our goal, but if we're going to sustain meeting that goal and sustain our diverse set of housing options, the threat to sustaining it is maintaining our current stock of affordable housing that's not run by SMHO. It's it's all the naturally occurring affordable house.
Well, the developers have have, we approved that ordinance, right? What, five percent of?
But what I'm saying is that five percent won't sustain the amount of affordable housing, the diversity of housing, affordable housing we have now. I'm just laying out a threat to our current goal. We can change our goal or we can think about strategies to to sustain meeting that goal in the future.
You guys aren't expressing completely opposite opinions.
Is there any other group besides SMHO that we could give that right of first refusal to Habitat or other?
I would need to go back and look at the bill or I'm looking at Ashley. I can't remember.
I know, I don't know off the top of my head.
Specifically, I think it might specifically be a housing authority, but I might, I would need to go back through a double check.
So of these fifty seven properties, how many of them are Lytec friendly?
So I think Littleton has three, maybe four, three or four Lytec properties in town.
Those are residents, are AMI, a certain level of AMI. I'm interested in the naturally affordable. I think there's some real options there, and I don't know what our tools are. But if if something, for some reason, it's an older, maybe whatever, how do we keep that affordable? And how strict do we get? Do we say any new person that comes in has to be at a certain level of AMI? I I don't know what tools we have to keep places affordable.
I'll touch upon that.
You're going to talk, okay. I would be interested in that.
Again, I guess that's exactly my point. Why is that council direction? Why is that not South Metro Housing? That's the whole reason for South Metro Housing. Why are we set in the direction on what we deem affordable? You know, is that is that really our our?
Don't we have different tools than they do?
I'm sorry.
I don't know. Don't we have different tools to do things like that?
We can do ordinance, we can we can do stuff like that and then let the private sector deem what what, you know, they can afford to build.
But we're just talking about it because of the bill, right?
They're not talking about not building stuff.
I know, I know she's talking about. We don't have anything now.
Clarify or just ask Julie to confirm HP twenty four eleven seventy five applies to designated affordable.
It applies to, it's twofold. So you have the, it applies to units that are officially deed restricted affordable, but then the second portion applies to those older properties.
Thirty year old, what was it you say fifteen to a hundred unit?
I mean, we have a variety of housing in our community. It's just people stay there. I mean, it's just not like they're coming available all the time. Maybe those of us that have canvassed the different neighborhoods, I mean, there is a lot of different options out there.
We're kind of getting off track of the question that Julie put for us is do we want to sign over our right to South Metro Housing? Do we want to just completely waive it or do we want to hold on to ourselves? I don't want to hold on to it. I don't, the direction that council has had in the past is we don't want to be residential landlords. And so I say sign it over to South Metro Housing Options is my preference.
On this this question, for us to take a different approach, we would have to really staff up differently to be, as we saw last fall, to be ready to act on the kind of timeline that the law calls for. I know, you know, SMHO, this is what they do. You know, they do have the constraints that they explained, but in terms of capital and real estate expertise and the ability to act quickly if the right, if the right opportunity comes about, they're a much better position than the city is now. You know, again, if if council were to direct, we could do things differently. But I, we would say that it's, you know, we would have a better chance of capitalizing on these opportunities if South Metro Housing Options is our our actor.
Yeah, I I agree one hundred percent with the mayor. I don't want to be in the landlord business. I think the lesson from Geneva Village is we are not a successful landlord.
And that's where we are right now. She's just want to confirm that continuing the course of where we are.
But I'm, but I'm saying, I'm saying yes, and. I mean, I think, I think the the presentation from Corey last time suggested to me that it's not likely that they're going to take over these properties.
That's probably correct. At least they would have the up.
That that's right. And so I'm saying, yes, and if we as a city want to maintain this diversity of housing, we need to do more. We need to continue this discussion as a council if we want to. That's all I'm saying.
If I'm with Robert, I don't think that we want to be landlords, but I think things will continue to change and we will see something new. We haven't even come up with yet, like a co op form and.
This is about us purchasing a building. That's the specific question here, not about providing money to a co op or anything. This is about us purchasing, so. So there, I think we can continue. I think we all vehemently agree with each other, but don't realize it.
Last piece on the regulatory pieces, we are, you know, just monitoring the current legislative session for bills that are coming through.
Because you said legislation is fun.
I did. Super, super good time. So moving on to the financial component, the financial levers, the funding tools are the most effective lever a city has. I'm really excited for the two thousand twenty four highlight, which is two years after passing the inclusionary housing ordinance. We saw many firsts for the IHO. So the first fee and payment was received. The first affordable housing policy agreement was recorded. The first project building affordable units was issued a building permit. The first fee and lieu revenue was dispersed to South Metro Housing Options to support their land purchase for Montview Flats. We also did our first fee and lieu rate adjustment to adjust for inflation. So very exciting first two years later. Two thousand twenty four also saw the city's first Proposition one twenty three award with three point four seven five million dollars in funding for that. This is really exciting because we've seen that the Proposition one twenty three funds are extremely competitive and hard to come by. So the fact that Littleton received some of that funding is great news and is exciting and made possible by our opting in to Proposition one twenty three. And also these, you know, coupled with the county support, the city's other financial support, other supporters. This has created, I think it's ninety two officially affordable deed restricted units, which should count towards our Proposition one twenty three goal of a hundred fifty nine affordable units by the end of two thousand twenty six. As we are discussing, preserving naturally affordable housing is extremely difficult. Opportunities to do so are rare. So this, and especially rare in an ownership or hybrid ownership model, because so many of the affordable housing opportunities are focused on multifamily rentals. So very exciting two thousand twenty four work results. In two thousand twenty five, the work on building out the inclusionary housing ordinance programs will continue with work planned on the compliance monitoring policy build out, further negotiations and work on the affordable housing policy agreement language, potential updates on some of the administrative updates on how the ordinance language reads, as well as the fee and expenditure policy and fee update scheduled in the fall, which I'm going to discuss more on the next slide. Work on surrounding the private activity bonds will also continue to move forward. We recognize that this is a historically underutilized tool for the city and now is a good time, given South Metro Housing Options development pipeline and also other projects that are happening locally potentially, to determine whether the city wants to leverage this tool in a different way to support those local developments. It did provide an overview of private activity bonds in the most recent quarterly housing newsletter. However, South Metro Housing Options Bond Council, I spelled that wrong on there, is going to present on June tenth study session to further educate and answer questions on private activity bonds and how they work. I've also heard, you know, kind of from council that interest in addressing policy and looking at preservation strategies. I will say that we're continuously brainstorming and researching opportunities to support preservation work. A lot of this work right now is in support of SMHO's for sale conversion portfolio, as well as that work through the right of first offer, first refusal, and keeping abreast of Proposition one twenty three programs that support preservation. Again, with finite resources, it's a challenging problem to address. There are other communities across Colorado who have created programs to, in exchange for a deed restriction and affordability period, they will help finance and support maybe some maintenance of the property or some renovations. It does take some money to start those programs and continue to operate them. There are some additional opportunities going forward, as I mentioned, to broaden some of this work. The TOC legislation, as well as the housing assessment legislation, legislation calls for the city to adopt displacement strategies and also to conduct displacement analysis. DOL released some initial guidance on potential strategies and options and what that could look like recently. At the end of June, they're scheduled to publish a more detailed guide for some of these strategies, best practices, case studies, also funding mechanisms, because most of the displacement strategies, again, require funding. So I think that's going to be an opportunity for us to kind of review and further implement maybe some additional policies and and how we kind of take a look at this. We are also reviewing the potential for a potential policy on fee waivers for someone who wants to come in to revitalize their property. So potentially could help support their work in that in that way. I do also think that the Woodland Boulevard sub area plan will present an opportunity to kind of review some of that displacement, just in terms of both commercial and residential as part of that process and that conversation. So I've definitely heard the interest in the concern, agree. It is something to look at. The levers are a little limited, but it is important and it is something that I'm constantly reviewing.
Two minor questions. You you said TOC legislation. What is that?
Sorry, transit oriented communities.
Okay, sorry, I missed.
There are so many acronyms.
Yeah, yeah, no, I apologize. I couldn't keep up. And then you talked about commercial displacement. I understand what residential displacement means. That's essentially gentrification, but what is commercial displacement?
Similarly, where if redevelopment happens, rents increase, you could have smaller business owners who can no longer afford the rent increases that go up.
Thank you.
And one of the displacement strategies is, you know, potentially grants and working with small businesses to help support them in those cases. Yes, yes, or vice versa. So returning to the inclusionary housing ordinance, we are seeking input on two items tonight, but just as a brief reminder and overview, inclusionary housing ordinance passed in November of two thousand twenty two. It requires for any residential project over five units in the city that five percent of those units be affordable. You can comply by paying a fee and lieu, or you can build those affordable units and receive incentives for building them. The terms and the incentives were selected after a lengthy and in depth review of impacts on pro forma. So different percentages from, I think it was two to ten percent were reviewed and what those impacts would be, along with various incentives and which ones developers found most useful, beneficial, and which ones would maybe offset some of the additional costs that you would incur from building the affordable units and not being able to charge as much rent. The way it was designed allows the city to use development to generate affordable opportunities. The inclusionary housing ordinance, as mentioned, also created an affordable housing fund from the fee and lieu revenue to be used by the city for the purposes of planning for subsidizing or acquiring properties to develop affordable housing in partnership with other entities who are in that space. So we continuously monitor the results and the feedback of the IHO, and we hear from applicants that it's manageable. It's not endangering project delivery. They find the process fairly straightforward, easy to comply with. Expedited review and fee rebates are the most frequently utilized incentives. We do anticipate a hundred twenty three affordable units from the development pipeline currently, as well as five point six million approximately in fee and lieu revenue for the Affordable Housing Fund. We are seeing that new projects coming in that are over twenty units are building the units to comply rather than paying the fee. And those projects that were granted a seventy five percent fee reduction because they were in progress at the time of the IHO passage are paying the lower fee and lieu for their compliance.
I have a quick question there. I I I'm sure I just missed this in 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 all that. You mentioned, I think it was like five point six million, expected over what time period?
Good question. It depends on the development pipeline. So five to ten years ish, you know, they they come in, the fee and lieu is due prior to building permit being issued. So.
Yeah, so like the first project that actually sent that check, right? It's two years after the passage, almost to the death.
And it's a project that was already well into the process because they were granted that reduction.
Thank you.
Can we talk about why they're buying out the, you know, in lieu of?
Rather than paying the fee?
Why they're paying a fee? The developer.
She said most of them are built yet, except for the ones that were.
But there's our people are still buying out the the, they're taking the option, buying it out. I'm just curious if they gave you a reason.
I've seen that is paying the fee outside of the ones who were granted that seventy five percent fee reduction, which I assume they're taking because it's very cheap in comparison to what it costs to build the units, was a project that was under twenty units and that we have a reduced fee and lieu for projects that are five to nineteen units. It's fifty percent of the total cost of development instead, so that and then it's reduced further. So that fee is a little more manageable would be what I would expect is the reason behind that.
At this point, those other developments come out of the ground. They haven't opted. I mean, when do, when can they decide what they want to do?
They decide at the time of formal application.
Which produces more housing?
Good question. You know, I think it's interesting because, you know, that five and a half, five point six million, when the IHO was passed, I know it was anticipated, you know, at the time, I'm thinking you could support several projects as gap financing with that, right? The financial market is changing as we saw from South Metro Housing Options presentation, and so that money does not go as far today as it did previously.
I think when, at the passage of the IHO, what we were seeing in the market is that most affordable projects, again, because that capital stack is way more complicated to get to the point that you can move a project forward, we were seeing about a million, maybe a million and a half gap financing. So, you know, that five point six million, thinking we probably can help support roughly five projects, kind of getting them across the finish line. I think, you know, the conversation we had with Corey last week, that gap is growing. And the sources, particularly the federal sources like CDBG and home funds, they're seeing a reduction of those. So I think a lot of the projects in the region are coming up closer to that two and a half million dollar gap. So obviously, that, the way that we can use those funds to make a new project come out of the ground is not as optimistic as we had hoped.
May I, just totally off the top of my head, it feels like each project produces fifty affordable units versus, so for two and a half million to get fifty units versus and versus the hundred and twenty that you've said we've gotten from all of them, all the other ones that have chosen not to buy in.
You're saying each project, each South Metro Housing Project does about fifty?
Thank you for helping me clarify that I'm not being clear. What I meant to say, what I was trying to say was each South Metro Housing development is fifty units. And so two units gets you to a hundred and all of the other units that have been developed at the same time is a hundred twenty three. That makes, I, that makes me think that the fee and lieu produces more affordable units than having the developer, just totally on the back of a napkin that I don't have in front of me, than than the, than having the developers build their own. Are there reasons why having the developer build their own is better anyways? Because maybe they're nicer units or it's more sustainable or I I'm just trying to understand the which is better conversation.
I think it's yes and they're both, I think they're both good. And I think having them spread out, you know, having a complete.
Integrated housing kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah, spread out. So there is some benefit to having a.
Yeah, no, I'm 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 just trying to, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, I think we're, you know, there's that obviously geographic spread, you know, where you can introduce affordable units across the city and and kind of every pocket of the city. There's also the being able to incorporate those into existing projects and communities where, you know, you've got sort of this mix where we're really trying to work towards compliance so that those units are able to float, so that you have, you're always meeting that requirement, but those units could be anywhere in in the property. So there are some of those benefits as well as, as we looked at the creation of the policy, it was really, how can we create a pipeline that keeps that private sector contribution for affordable? And then how can we do the?
And then how can we do the, you know, hundred percent affordable or majority affordable projects as well? So we kind of looked on both pathways.
But I feel like Julie said, the the both pathways are gonna run out, we're gonna run out of land. And at some point, there's just not gonna be new developments either way, right? You said it was finite, that's.
I'm referencing the fee and lieu in particular is finite, not so much the.
The future, okay, okay, I I misinterpreted, okay, thank you.
Can I ask about the majority affordable applications other than SMHO? Have we had private developers actually proposing any sort of majority, majority affordable projects?
We do um recently had a pre-app, um, that is looking, and they're very early in the process of what they're doing.
Okay.
Um, but that project would need to be majority affordable, um, so they're just kind of working through what that might look like. Um, and have had meetings and have had interest from other affordable developers, and just kind of taking a look at potential properties in town. So I have heard some of that interest, had some of those conversations, but I think off the top of my head. Um, that's the only one I can think of that actually kind of came in for a formal.
So it sounds like we've had one in that kind of time period that has gotten at least to that point of conceptual design where they can start looking at the actual numbers and trying to pencil it out.
I think it would be helpful to to kind of follow this story a little bit closely. Because we have so few private majority affordable projects that are being proposed, and that was one of the kind of key pipelines. So to um Councilmember Riker's point about, you know, trying to get more of these into the pipeline through kind of market forces. If there are things that we can do administratively to support those projects as they are coming in, I think it would be helpful to know this, especially if we have one that's already. At least interested to the point that they currently are. It would be a shame to, it would be a shame to not use this as an opportunity to figure out what are some of the kind of key hangups or or levers that could be pulled on our end in order to have made a project like that, that's why.
Right, maybe we see some of that with the deeper tier two incentives, um, and certainly kind of been reviewing those incentives and how they're being used. Um, I think it's a useful conversation, and we've also started some conversations on, you know, are there places and spaces for further um incentives? Or fee reductions or other places where we could help support that within the context of our limited resources.
That's close by, thanks.
Um, going back to the fee and lieu policy, if you're ready for that. Um, currently, you know, the requests that we've received are um reviewed informally based upon the acceptable use that was outlined in the IHO ordinance, or IHO ordinance. Uh, so we're suggesting that we might want to standardize the review criteria for consistency and transparency. Um, have proposed some options up here for what that could look like. And so are looking for feedback this evening on um, does this review criteria make sense? Does council wish to standardize this process? Are there additional considerations um we should look at in developing a more formalized fee and lieu policy?
Go ahead, Ms. Mayor.
I I like your criteria, I I I think formalizing it makes sense, I think it makes transparency and that helps everybody. I like your criteria. Kathleen, you mentioned something else that could be a criteria when you were talking about, which is, you know, um, having the affordable housing throughout the city. I mean, right now, most of it's concentrated in District Two, and so that might be a con- another one to consider.
So you're saying an incentive if it's not in District Two, so I'm not, no, I'm not trying to.
No, no, well, no, I I I, maybe.
If it's in a location that is lacking other affordable housing.
Yeah, it I I I would say maybe not an incentive, but we look at it more favorably, but just to consider it, I'm not sure I own that a hundred percent, but I just, just an idea.
I kind of like the fact that we have actually kept it somewhat flexible because that did allow us to kind of pursue an opportunity we didn't, well, an opportunity we at least provide a a degree of assistance. We didn't know we were going to need to provide for a non-deed restricted property like Meadowwood. And, you know, that'll, it it allowed us to be flexible and still kind of remain true to the ethos that was behind the, you know, the fee and lieu in the first place. So, I mean, I'm I'm happy to put things down on paper, but I would just also say, for someone who is so personally interested in process and formalizing things. There is an advantage to keeping some of these things flexible. So to your point about how, you know, naturally affording housing preservation, if there's a way we can support with like a major capital improvement that would drive up. You know, pricing if the property were to be redeveloped or if they were to do it on their own. And by us taking on a major capital project to keep their, um, you know, rents lower. That could, in my mind, could be a a very acceptable use, and I just want to say that deed restriction may not have something to do with it more than. Does it kind of fit the ethos of what we're trying to achieve with housing affordability? Could be a way to keep preservation in the mix.
So what I heard you say, which I think was a smart idea, is that your first bullet, one hundred percent affordable deed restricted, is the place we may need the more flexibility.
I I I think so, I think certainly within city limits, does this fill a funding gap, yeah, we wouldn't be here otherwise. Um, use of leveraged funds, I mean, like, again, if if a private property owner, you know, had a thirty-plus-year-old property. And they're like, wow, we need a total fire code update, like, we are way out of line kind of thing, we had a major accident kind of thing. You know, to, in order to do a major renovation like that, it would ultimately drive rents pretty high and and to an unaffordable place for people. And I would say, if we are the only funding source, I would also not necessarily have a problem with that. I think it's a positive that they seek state and county funding or federal funds where they exist, but I also don't have a problem that they don't have leveraged funding either.
But isn't, I mean, on that last bullet.
Yeah.
If they're leveraging their existing private um investment in that place, I mean, they're maintaining their private investment. If you added leveraging other resources from counties, state, federal, or private investments, you would.
Sure.
Expand that one to.
Yeah, I just want to just keep us.
No, I love your, I I I'm not.
And are you advocating taking out deed restricted à la Meadowwood so that we have more flexibility or could do something with the naturally affordable?
Yeah, exactly, Meadowwood wasn't deed restricted, but it was certainly within the purview of, again, the ethos of the fund that we we step in with some degree of support. But um, I mean, like I said, I'm happy to put more, you know, parameters around it, but I also don't want to just box us in.
I think that makes sense, the one item that I would note that could be a potential barrier to that is just that the ordinance does specifically say affordable. And then they go on to define what affordable means within it, so that just might be a conversation to have on, you know, how much flexibility and room we have to maneuver within that.
So are you suggesting that we recommend certain AMI range?
I, so I want to go back through to the ordinance, but the ordinance specifically says the IHO fee and lieu is used to support affordable housing, right? But then, and then we have definitions within there of what affordable means. I would want to go back through and look at how um ironclad that kind of is. So you might have a situation, it does not address deed restriction, but it does address affordability. So if someone is renovating their property, but it's not going to serve people at sixty percent of the area median income, that could potentially be a barrier, it's something to look at.
Naturally affordable, we might not have that data on those people that are renting, correct?
That as well, but if they are coming to us and we are asking, asking us for revenue, I'm sure that that would be information that would be exchanged as part of that.
I think the other um policy piece that we've talked, talked about is that if we're outside of the uh deed restricted. Affordable, um, we'll want to have mechanisms that will en- ensure that it stays affordable, e- even if it's not um, not deed restricted. If if the the city were to invest five hundred thousand dollars, um, it would be important that those units, you know, have some guarantee. For affordability by whatever uh income levels we we specify.
And I think as our previous discussion talked about is, preservation is one of the biggest uh issues that we see. And I think, you know, using the fee and lieu policy to be is inclusive for preservation, not just building new units. Because that's going to get smaller and smaller options, but to have the ability to preserve it, I think this would be, it's great to use these funds for that. With the tight parameters, but also the flexibility needed to accomplish the goals.
Yeah, uh, the whole topic here, but how how do we decide who um, AMI, okay? If the unit's eighty percent AMI, who makes the decision who gets that unit? Is that the developer, is, does that come into the the city? No, okay, so we say out of that piece of it.
We do, but we need, we need to build off this process still, there will be reporting requirements uh that happen annually. Where we will check and make sure they are following the provisions of the inclusionary housing ordinance.
So it comes down to, everybody submits their application, the developer looks at all the people and say, oh, this person's most worthy, I guess.
He's the criteria.
He's the criteria, but if they all meet the criteria, they all meet the criteria, then what do you do? Pick out a hat?
I don't think we've been clear.
I I I hope, I'd like for the city to kind of stay out of it.
Okay, so what are you taking away? Because I I hear a bunch of different ideas.
Are we talking criteria for compliance with the IHO or criteria for?
This, but the review criteria, isn't that what you're asking us about? Okay, so do we have consensus?
So this is for criteria for utilizing the funds that the city has for other additional projects, right?
Selecting.
So I don't hear a consensus or clarity, if somebody could clarify.
I can clarify, just, you know, what I'm hearing is um, okay with naturally uh affordable, not just deed restricted. Um, need to define affordable and how we would expect it to continue to be over some period of time. Um, and that it it would be, you know, some of the things would help give us some some guidances, um, you know. Key improvements, life safety, utility type improvements, um, are the kinds of things outside of uh acquisition. That council would be comfortable with.
Yeah, so so I, you know, the, where I hear is that, if we do that kind of thing, it's not deed restricted, but it's time limited restricted. So ten or twenty years or something that feels reasonable for the investment. You know, you can't ask for an arm and a leg when you only offer a small amount, but yeah, some trade off there.
What I hear was the council is more flexible on the, how you define affordability, just as long as we're meeting the affordability policy. Yes, it's got to do with the city, yes, it needs to have a gap, because if there's no gap, why are we just giving them money? That's just, you know, there needs to be a gap, and I think, I don't think the, at least my takeaway, the 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 fourth one there isn't a requirement. But there's maybe a preference given to someone that, hey, is bringing money, you don't, you don't have to be using state or county or federal funds.
No, but and I just think if if people are willing to keep their privately owned property affordable for a two million dollar investment. You're leveraging their existing equity, and so it's still levered, it meets the spirit of that last bullet.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, because we've always thought about it in terms of building, but I think the preservation issue, which, I don't know, for some reason we haven't talked about in detail, really makes a lot of sense.
No, so I think the, to me, the question is still, if it's only to be used for new projects, and that's what we're talking about changing, it would be for preservation of existing projects. So something like Meadowwood that was not deed restricted when it was sold, but is absolutely deed restricted now. They would have a a way to apply for something as long as it meets all this criteria.
What if it wasn't deed restricted?
Well, that's.
I think that's what we're trying to say, is we can have some flexibility that it does, as long as it's meeting the affordability.
And then for affordable.
For some time period that feels like it's worth our investment, yeah.
And is that um, an AMI? Do you have to, you know, satisfy an AMI criteria or?
It's probably more in the details than.
Yeah, Julie's gonna go back.
Okay, so we don't know about AMI at this point, okay.
I suspect we would want to take a look at it and keep the.
Oh, that's when you were talking about the. Exchanging informations with the, okay.
Yeah, and stay with, stay true to that affordability.
And I can say, the affordability parts within that, our code section do refer to certain percentages of AMI.
I agree.
It's over, it's, you're here.
Yeah, I mean, best new council member ever.
I would also say too, like, this is, it's a really interesting opportunity because we don't really know, and you know, once we kind of branch away from new build. And the capital stacking kind of, you know, thought process, we don't quite know what we're gonna see. I mean, you mentioned fifty-some-odd potential eligible projects that would have qualified under some of the state, um, you know, projects. And like, we don't know percentage of AMI in terms of residence, we we don't know what the private, you know, what the equity is in those properties. And I just will say, like, it will be interesting to know, and if we approach this much more flexibly to start, we'll see kind of what the pool of need is. Like, rather than just putting a hard and fast line on it saying, you gotta have X percentage below sixty percent or, you know, eighty percent AMI or below. We'll never really know who at that eighty-one percent AMI would have really needed the capital, you know what I mean? So, I mean, I I just want to say again, like, more flexibility to start will show us what the market need is. That's it. I tried to reserve.
So as those, so introducing that flexibility, um, our inboxes are filling, yeah.
Yeah, but that's a good thing, right?
With requests, and so is that, is that process still one by one? That the council would like to, you know, we would introduce a potential request for council to consider and go through a similar process as you did last week?
I mean, it almost might make sense to solicit a time period by which applications should be submitted on a, I I I know we're getting in weird spaces.
Yeah.
Ah, no, you're right, sorry.
So just so if that, for for right now, it's 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 hard to sort of take a temperature read on on what projects may be out there. I know we often get interest in, you know, do you think council would entertain supporting this type of project? So um, those may come back now if there is extra flexibility. So we would go through a similar process, most likely putting that, you'd have that information in advance. Putting that potentially on a general business item, allowing for council discussion, and then a decision as part of that. And so I guess I'm I'm checking in to make sure that that process worked, um, and that that's what, how we would approach any requests that we receive in short term.
I think at this point, yeah, I guess that makes the most sense, as you may have heard. Anytime you have someone that has a, you know, a request to council, there's uncertainty in that, and so that that's kind of the reason with, you know, trying to remove council, having, you know, these one-off decisions here and there. But I think it's kind of a.
We could also come back with some flexibility, with some, some options for certain, you know, dollar thresholds, investment thresholds. You know, council may see, may find that if we have, you know, requests for twenty-five thousand dollars help on this. Uh, restoration uh project, that there's, there's some flexibility for staff for up to four of those per year. Or, you know, something, so we can come back so that not, the council's not seeing every small request.
And I think, I don't think we have enough information to figure out how that would work, I mean, it's, we'd rather.
Okay.
Yeah.
So so I think, I think if there is that, um, you know, we'll kind of still sort of negotiate that um based on, based on the requests.
I like the idea of there's a denial of it, that we can blame staff, and it didn't come to council, it was staff said no.
I bet you do.
We'll, we'll, we'll bring all of this back to you just to kind of formalize what we're, what we're hearing. Uh, but as a backstop context point, there's how how much left in the the fund right now?
Just over a million.
Just over a million, and we we know there will be some, you know, uh, policy tension, you know, for these, for the flexible help projects. With some of the the next SMHO project, and I just, we'll have to kind of help structure that. You know.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, you know, that that finite, that's where it comes in, like, our, our potential um trajectory of what that fee and lieu looks like is finite right now. Like, we're not seeing ongoing contributions to the housing fund.
Yeah, I I.
And so that's what we expect, but we are sort of at the, at the mercy of when we realize those dollars is all based on when they move forward with the building government. So even those are, they're fully entitled projects, um, but they may not move into that next stage tomorrow or this year, it may be in in out years.
I mean, I think this is super exciting, but but, you know, we, I, in my mind, this is, we're we're placing bets around how do you get and sustain affordable housing? And we, we actually know that the bet, the SMHO bet is a really good bet, like, they come through when we, when we, when we put that bet. And we're essentially entertaining placing other bets with existing private property owners, and I think that's a direction we need to go. But because it's a bet, I think it definitely needs to come to council, and we need to own that we're doing that risk with this finite, finite amount of money. And so I I feel, yeah.
I was gonna say, and the terms, I think, need to reflect that kind of, that 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 risk analysis, right? You know, because we are, you know, potentially passing up an opportunity to drive forward a majority affordable project through SMHO. You know, if we were to say, take half a million dollars for a private project, we'd also want to make sure that we hedge and have, you know, appropriate parameters around.
Yeah, I just want. I just want, yeah, I want us to own the, to own the the risks we're taking. And I think that's, but I'm excited about the possible direction we're going.
The next item, we're looking for some input on the inclusionary housing ordinance. Fee and Lou is scheduled for an update in the fall as part of the COMDEV fee review. We've heard from council that they would like to review more than just the fee on the inclusionary housing ordinance. We potentially, potentially take a look at some of the other parameters of the IHO. We have identified, as I mentioned earlier, some administrative items for cleanup within the ordinance. Just some clarifications on which processes expedited review applies to some of the language cleanup around the AMI and the definitions, when the affordable housing policy agreement is due, so that we can dovetail that with our other development review process. We're also aware that, you know, we're seeing other cities regionally who have adopted IHOs prior to us, have older IHOs. They are making some adjustments to their ordinances. We've seen kind of a lot of the work that has been done to that, so paying attention to that. Also, as I mentioned, monitoring some of the legislative impacts on the inclusionary housing ordinance incentives, like the parking agreement or some of the transit oriented communities requirements that allow for administrative approval. As I mentioned before, you know, we're in very early days of the results of the IHO. There is a benefit to the stability and consistency for applicants and developers to really know and understand what this is. And here's our policy, this is consistent. Having said that, you know, obviously, I understand and recognize the housing market and conditions are constantly shifting. And this is not an ordinance that can just sit on the shelf and gather dust. It does need to be responsive. But there's really a balance kind of. And, and when the IHO was adopted, you know, there was a lot of thought and work that went into the parameters that were selected and why they were selected. So I think that is a lengthier process for review. And that kind of reviewing that is a body of work. And then there's extensive work to that. And I just want to, you know, we don't just want to willy nilly change everything. We really want to understand if we are going to change them, what are those impacts? What is that going to look like? Why are we doing that? So I did kind of want to hear what everyone wanted to review as part of that update. And, and what some of those potential options are, as I'm constantly in the IHO world, so certainly have.
You're not in the legislative world.
The regulation is not having fun.
She's not having fun.
You know, so it, it is something that I'm thinking about constantly and monitoring. So I certainly have some ideas, but want to hear, you know, what council would like to hear as part of that review and update. And what are the other items you think we should be looking at?
I would like to look at are kind of the incentive for, for sale versus rental to kind of make sure that the for sale ones have either a lower fee, fee and Lou or because it's right now, the rentals are even actually cheaper fee and Lou than a for sale. Look at that. And then potentially the percentages, I know our five percent is one of the lowest, is the lowest, I believe, in the metro area. I know Brewfield had it at twenty and they just increased it to twenty-five percent. For rentals, for their for sale, I think is, I don't know if it's still at twelve or one like that. But the percentage that needs to be built, preference for rental, for, for sale versus rental, and then kind of tiers where the breakdown, we have a different, the total development cost for the fee at, what was it, at twenty, more, more than twenty units, between five and nineteen is a different percentage.
Fifteen is fifty percent or twenty and above is seventy-five percent.
To look at that. I don't know what the answer would be, but just to.
So that five percent was to, to to entice the builders to build.
To build. And like. Said, yeah, that's what they're doing. So, I mean, I'm not saying go to twenty-five percent, but I'm like, okay. Now, I was saying, you know, if it's, if you're doing for sale, sure, I'll just say, keep five percent. If you're going to a rental.
Is tolls all, is all tolls for sale?
They did, no, they're not all for sale.
They got some, they got some for rent.
And they did the fee and Lou. They were grandfathered in with that low.
All of the powers of all is for rent, right? Everybody's for rent.
That's what I'm trying, if we can incentivize for sale units by having a better.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, I'd love to revisit the percent build minimums that we have versus the fee. I think that's and see what, and see what the rest of the market's kind of responding to right now. What's, what's too painful, quite frankly. I mean, I know some, a lot of municipalities cross that line into too painful and got nothing for it.
Yeah, the higher.
Yeah. If you're too painful, they move, they fly right over.
Yeah, exactly. No, I, I just kind of want to figure out where that line is nowadays, like, in terms of what is too painful.
And that's where we spend significant time looking at project pro formas here in Littleton, trying to understand that market dynamic. Because we were, we were layering this on top of the new land use code. So significant change, significant different process. So, and a reputation of being a, a harder community to work with. So trying to remedy some of that through the new code, but then also layering this new policy. And if you remember, we had projects that were, you know, going through the process of getting to base zoning on a Thursday, and then this IHO gets passed on Monday, which changes the dynamics of, of how their, and what their project can look like. So I, do you think we, we kind of looked at that elasticity almost of, of what the percentage could be? And, and so there's, there's an opportunity to relook at that. These communities with the larger percentages have a much reduced fee and Lou. So I think it's hard to do apples to apples because, but if we were to do as close a comparison as possible, we have by far the highest fee and Lou, like, probably close to three times what other communities would ask for that commitment. So I, do you think that's that's driving behavior, right? Like, so the policy approach that council at the time chose was lowest percentage, highest fee and Lou. Let's see if we can bring that behavior of building the affordable units to, to bear.
Each community is different. Like, when I mentioned Brewfield, I mean, there's a much greater demand for building housing there. It's just, they're just going up left and right. That's not the same environment that's here in Littleton. So that's why it's important to have our housing policy as a local level, right, Patrick?
Sure.
Just to, Julie. I'm happy to look at cleanup.
Now, I do, I do think that's a, it's a body of research and work. And the market right now for housing has so much volatility and uncertainty in it that that analysis could be challenging to kind of take a look at. But I, I do agree, it's important to look at our context, because it is quite different than Brewfield or Boulder or Denver.
Yeah. And something we've been talking about and hearing from people in the industry, you know, rents are decreasing, which is an excellent thing, but it's also causing the potential of projects to move forward. It has its ripple effect of now can, if that's the lower rent that I can achieve, can I build this project? And so it is, like, the market sensitivities are an interesting dynamic to layer in. And there's a lot of uncertainty right now.
Fortunately, building costs have been very easy to estimate, so.
Yeah. Well, and, and, and I think, and I think, I think getting building supplies is going to be much easier too. Said with sarcasm.
All, all the costs will be paid by them.
Right.
That's a different discussion.
Me, take us off track.
We are just over halfway through this presentation, so let's move along, council.
You want me to talk then?
Yes.
Can I move it over? Oh, this is a lot of words this evening. So thank you. Moving on to partnerships. We know partnerships, good partnerships are crucial to achieving the city's housing goals. So two thousand twenty-four saw a significant collaboration, both externally with SMHO, Dr. Cog, Arapahoe County, and the state. Internally, I just want to take a minute to highlight how continuously impressed I am with all of the departments that touch housing across, you know, COMDEV, economic development, public works, the city attorney's office, the city manager's office, the communications department. It is a amazing group of people who really come together to collaborate and come up with creative problem solving. And I saw particularly in two thousand twenty-four, just the amount of communication and addressing some issues with the development process, some items South Metro Housing Options had, and just everyone's willingness to help and communicate. It's just, it's been phenomenal to see and experience. So going into two thousand.
You forgot to mention how focused council always is as well too.
I think twice, yes.
I'm glad Reed's not here to hear the praise.
You'll pass it on.
So moving forward into two thousand twenty-five, you know, that work will continue as we continue to look at additional tools to support our partners, exploring those additional options that we can do. Also participating in the Littleton Boulevard Subarea Plan, which I'm very excited to be a part of the project management team and to be a part of that collaboration, to make sure that all of the city's goals are being addressed as part of that. Sorry, private activity bonds and fee and Lou. And then moving on to communication, in two thousand twenty-four, really had a focus on increasing the cadence of housing communication through Littleton Report articles and the internal quarterly housing newsletter. Definitely recognized we have more work to do in this space. So two thousand twenty-five work is going to include the build out of an external housing website as well as presenting at conferences on Littleton's housing efforts and the work we are doing, the wonderful work we are doing in our wonderful city council support.
That felt forced.
Check us out at CML this summer.
I can only do it offense. Also working on the strategic outcome indicators and doing the research to identify best practices and items so that that, to be a part of that communication process and so that, you know, the public and everyone can see where we are at on our goals, why we're doing what we're doing and what that looks like. Setting those goals are not straightforward, but work is progressing. And then I'm bringing us full circle on special projects. So two thousand twenty-four, work on the Geneva Village and Northern Gateway application for the ULI TAP, and that work will continue through two thousand twenty-five. And then look forward to whatever other special projects arise throughout the year.
Other duties as assigned.
So, and I do, you know, it's a really exciting time to work for the city. There's so much going on. We made a lot of progress on our housing goals. There's a lot more that is coming. It does take a lot of work and time, but it is really exciting. And I do appreciate all of the support from council and everyone in the city moving these goals forward and definitely looking forward to hearing more feedback. Do you have a couple other questions that we have not gotten to yet? And that was just around, are there any other additional items or specifics around private activity bonds we should make sure to address when South Metro Housing Options Bond Council comes in? And are there any specific items you want us to make sure to have Dr. Cog address as part of the regional housing needs assessment presentation? And I'm happy to hear any other feedback as well.
For the PAB conversation, the key thing I want to be able to do is educate my constituents about what that means. And so giving us tools to do that education is important to me.
I know we've talked about that with the weird bond being in there, but there's no obligation on the part of the city, right? Like, so we've, we've shared that with their bond council through SMHO, because it is, it's a weird one. That, and, and such an underutilized tool. I think it's been more than thirty years that we've utilized this tool.
With the, with the two thousand ten.
She feels like they're years.
So sooner than that, yeah.
I mean, that was fifteen years ago, which is crazy, right?
Yeah, exactly.
I'm a numbers guy.
And then, I mean, I do have to make it to this last slide.
Who's dog is that?
Dogs.
It's just reached that point in the evening where everyone finds comfort in this image.
If I may, council, I would just, I'd like to also recognize one of our, our partners in, in really securing affordable housing, the Meadowwood community folks who are here with us. You know, we talked about Prop one, two, three, and how, you know, proud we are that a Littleton, as a community, receives some of that funding, but it's really the work of the Meadowwood community, you know, association now that did that work and, you know, really earned that funding. So we're, we're proud to have helped, but I think the credit goes to them and we're really proud and we just want to acknowledge that. So, thank you. I think that's all we have.
Good. Thank you for that very informative presentation. Council, anybody have any updates or anything? Uh, there's the, what, the PD awards tomorrow?
Yes, at three o'clock. It's always appreciated if, if, if council members can be there. It's the annual Police Department Awards.
Thursday is the Shay Lizeth's, uh, Crep- Crepery ribbon, or one year anniversary, I guess. For council, I think, this is Chambers doing that.
There might be creeps.
Might be creeps. All right. City manager, anything?
Further tonight, Mary.
Over to TMB and stuff.
You're disappointed as always.
Come on, this is your time to shine right now. All right, thanks. We are adjourned.